It is now three o'clock. I'd like to thank everybody for coming this afternoon. I see some new faces. We have Penn Fed Credit Union representatives here, Mr. Gregory Ranshaw and Monique Rogers. Thank you and your organization for all that you do for our veterans and also our family members of the active-duty soldiers and what you contribute to our community. Thank you so much for being here. And for our other special guests, this is your first time being here. Thank you all for coming out to voice your concerns and your opinions during our citizen comments. I just want to make it clear, when you signed up with the city secretary at the top, it says citizen comments is only agenda items. And for public hearing, if you would like to talk on one of those items, you would have to sign up for it in public hearing. You cannot discuss that during the citizen comments. We will have our invocation, and we will also have our pledge of allegiance by Council Member Adams. Please stand up with me. Most gracious Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you continue to bless this great nation from the federal, state, county, and to the municipalities. Bless our leadership. Bless our men and women that protect and serve this country for cabosos and all the military installations and their families. God bless the city of Colleen. Bless our residents, more so our elders and our young people. Continue to make us a prosperous city, a city of unity, one accord, and bring peace in the decisions that we make, that we do it for the good of all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join us in honoring our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Councilmember Adams, for the pledge of allegiance. Let the record show that Councilmember Alvarez is not here. And it is an approved excuse. He gave us plenty of notice. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Boyd.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Adams.
A second.
All in favor, yes. The motion carries six to zero. We will now have our work session. Counsel, you have three times to speak for three minutes. We'll discuss items one through 12 for the April 1st, 2025 regular session. There's no final actions until the regular session. With that being said, Madam Secretary.
RS 25039, consider a memorandum resolution accepting the annual audit report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Tangalyn.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Today, we have Mr. Taproot from Patillo Brown &amp; Hill here to present the results of the audit.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to perform the audit this year. And I'd also like to give special thanks to Judith and all of the city staff that assisted us during the course of the audit. As you can imagine, from looking at the city's annual comprehensive financial report, there's close to 180 pages of information in that report. And to prepare that, at the same time, they're having to respond to all of our requests for documentation and answering all our questions. They really did a nice job, a fantastic job, of giving us the information that we needed in order to complete the audit in a timely manner. We have completed the city's audit for fiscal year 2024. What I'd like to do today is to just briefly go over the audit process. We'll talk about the results of the audit, which are contained in three different auditors' reports that you have. I will discuss the required communications. Anytime that you undergo an audit process, there are certain communications that your auditor is required to communicate to the governing body. I'll briefly go over the annual comprehensive financial report. Obviously, we won't go into that report in detail, but I kind of let you know what's included in the report and how our opinion relates to each one of those sections. And then if anyone has any questions at any time, I'd be happy to address those. The way the audit process works, we usually come out and do some interim field work. That was done last year during August of 2024. During that time, we're gaining an understanding of all of the internal controls at the city over the financial reporting process and over your compliance. We're doing basically everything that we can do to make the audit go smoother when we perform the final field work, which is done during December and January. At that time, we're coming in, and that's when we're really doing all the detailed testing of the substantive tests and the analytical procedures in order to verify that all of your financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As a reminder, we were engaged to perform the city's financial statement audit. In addition to that, you may recall that any local government in the country that spends over $750,000 in federal grant awards in a fiscal year is also required to undergo what's called a single audit. And the city did hit that threshold during the fiscal year. And what that triggers, the single audit process, in addition to your financial statement audit, we perform a compliance audit of your federal grant awards programs. The independent auditors' report on the financial statements you would find in the city's annual comprehensive financial report on pages 21 through 23. And what this report basically says is that the preparation of these financial statements is the responsibility of the city. Your auditors can assist with the preparation of those financial statements, and we do, as long as certain safeguards are put in place, and all of those safeguards were put in place. But ultimately, it's the city's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. It's your auditor's responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements. Happy to report, we've issued what's called an unmodified opinion. You'll often hear it referred to as a clean opinion, and it's the highest form of opinion that you can receive. And what that really means to you as a user of these financial statements is that the financial statements that you have have been audited by our firm, and in our opinion, they're free of any material misstatements, and they're also presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You will also note in the very last paragraph on page 23 that our audit was performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And those standards require your auditor to do a number of things that go beyond just generally accepted auditing standards, one of which is to report on your internal controls over the financial reporting process and your compliance with contracts, grants, laws, and regulations. You would find this report on page one of your separately issued single audit report. And what this report basically says, it's split out really into two sections. The first section deals with your internal controls over the financial reporting process. And what that really means is, in order for your auditor to plan and perform your audit, they first have to gain an understanding of your internal controls over the financial reporting process. That is to say, gain an understanding of all the policies and procedures that you have in place in order to ultimately prepare these financial statements. Your auditor's doing that not in an effort to identify deficiencies. You're doing it so that you can plan and perform your audit accordingly. However, if during that process we do identify any deficiencies, either in the way those procedures have been designed or the way they're operating, we are required to report them in this letter. And you can see here at the bottom of that section that there were no significant deficiencies identified during the course of the audit. The second part of this letter deals with noncompliance. And here, where we're talking about noncompliance, we're talking about noncompliance with contracts, grants, laws, or regulations, matters that we believe if we were to find noncompliance, they could have a material impact on your financial statements. So those would be type of things usually that would end up resulting in a liability that would have to be recorded in your financial statements. For example, if we were to test a grant program, and we found some unallowable expenditures that were charged to a grant, and we believe that you might have to return that money to the granting agency, then that would be an example, if it was material to your financial statements, of something that would qualify for inclusion in this report. And as you can see at the bottom of page one, the results of our test disclose no instances of noncompliance to report. The third and final auditors' report that we have issued immediately follows the government auditing standards report and begins on page three. This is the report that covers the federal awards compliance part of the audit that I was speaking about earlier. If you look in your single audit report on pages six and seven, you would see a schedule called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, and you would see all of the different federal grants that the city spent money on during the fiscal year. You can see there was a total of just over $21.4 million spent during the fiscal year. Now, the way the compliance audit works for the single audit process, your auditors, they don't test every program every year. That would be cost prohibitive. So there's a risk assessment process that we have to do. We have to select certain programs for testing. Those programs ultimately are what's called a major program. You can see here that the two programs that we selected for testing were the Home Investment Partnerships Program and then the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. The report that I mentioned earlier that starts on page three really deals with our testing over those two programs. So the first thing we have to do in this report is that we have to express an opinion as to whether or not we believe the city complied in all material respects with the requirements of that program. Happy to report that we've issued, again, what's called an unmodified opinion or clean opinion, and it's the best opinion that you can receive. And all that really means is that, in our opinion, the city did comply in all material respects with the compliance requirements of that program. The second part of this opinion letter deals with internal controls. But here, we're not talking about internal controls over the financial reporting process. We're talking about all of the policies and procedures that you have set up in order to comply with these two major programs. If during our audit, we were to identify any deficiencies in those controls, either in the way that they were designed or the way that they were operating, even if we didn't find any actual noncompliance, we would still have to report the deficiency in internal controls in this report. And as you can see, there were no deficiencies that were identified during the course of your audit over your federal grant awards programs. So to summarize just the results of the audit in a nutshell, basically, you're batting a thousand. You've got a clean opinion on your financial statements. We had no internal control deficiencies that were identified, either with respect to creating your financial statements or complying with your major federal awards programs. And there was also no noncompliance or question cost or anything of that nature with respect to your federal awards testing. So I congratulate the city on the clean results of the audit. I have been auditing local governments for over 30 years, and I can assure you, they don't always go that way. So I've always liked to congratulate the city when you get clean results on the audit. In addition to the opinion letters that we've issued, I would like to just briefly touch on the required communications. As I mentioned earlier, anytime you undergo an audit, there's a list under the standards, there's certain communications that your auditor is required to communicate to the governing body. Most of these, we've either already touched on, or they're just negative assurances. We've talked about our responsibility and the city's responsibility. There were no unusual transactions that were identified during the course of the audit. And there were also no significant new accounting principles that had to be implemented this year. There were some new accounting standards, but they really didn't have a significant impact to the city this year, which is a nice break. You might recall, in the last few years, we've had Sabidas, leases, OPEB's pensions. It's just been a flood of new standards, and they finally gave you a break this year. We do have some new ones coming up next year that you'll have to implement. There were no fraud or illegal acts that were identified. I mentioned earlier, there were no weaknesses in internal control. Other information contained in documents containing audited financial statements, I will touch on this when I speak about the annual comprehensive financial report shortly. Management judgments and estimates. The preparation of any set of financial statements, for the most part, is going to include some estimates. You have estimates such as your allowance for uncollectible receivables. There are estimates regarding your capital assets and how much of their lives you used. There's a lot of estimates going on with respect to your pension and OPEB liabilities. During the audit process, we look at all those estimates, and we determine that we believe they are reasonable, and we did that. We did not encounter any significant difficulties during the course of the audit. Every audit does have certain management representations that you have to make at the end of the audit, and that was done. And to our knowledge, there were no consultations by the city with other accounting firms during the course of the audit. And audit adjustments, if there were significant or material audit adjustments, we would be required to go over those with you, but we did not have any audit adjustments that were proposed during the audit that were material to the financial statements. And the way that process usually works is even if your financial statements were not originally prepared in accordance with GAAP, your auditors will normally just propose an adjustment, and then the audity would make the adjustment, and then you would still get a clean opinion. We actually didn't have any material audit adjustments, so there are none of those to go over. Won't spend a lot of time going over your annual comprehensive financial report, but I will just, would kind of like to just let you know what's included in the report and what our opinion covers in the report. If you're looking at an annual comprehensive financial report, it's really split up into three sections. You've got an introductory section, a financial section, and then a statistical section. The first and the last section are always unaudited. There is a lot of good information in your statistical section. If you're interested, there's a lot of 10-year trend data that is interesting, some demographic and economic statistics, but those sections are unaudited. The real meat and potatoes from the audit standpoint is your financial section, and that would be pages 20 through 145 of your annual comprehensive financial report. There are a couple of sections in the financial sections that are also unaudited. That would be anything that would be included in your required supplementary information. And then again, that's not just on this audit. That's on every audit of every local government across the country. Your auditor is basically expressing opinion on the financial section, but with the sections that are unaudited, we're still making sure that you have included all of the required schedules that are required to be included. And then if there is information in that section that is supposed to agree to the audited part of the report, we make sure that that does agree. So it's not that we're not doing anything with those sections, but we're not doing enough work to actually express an opinion on those two sections. Again, I congratulate the city on the clean results of the audit, and if anyone has any questions about the audit process or your financial statements, I'd be happy to answer
Thank you so much, sir, for your update. Councilmember Segar.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know that it's being presented by our finance department here, but just for clarification, so everybody knows, when you do the audit, you're looking at all the departments and how they transfer money between them. Because a few years ago, I know that that was a challenge for us as a city, where the city manager had to put a whole bunch of lines on how, you know, one department transfers another. But when you do the audit, you're ensuring that all the transfers and all that is done correctly?
Correct. Anything that ends up being included in your financial section, which should be everything, you know, all of the city's departments, we're looking at all of that.
Yeah, no. I just want to say congratulations, because I know we've had an outstanding finance department here. They always do a great job. And congratulations, and thank you. Thank you for presenting such a great report.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the council? Sir, thank you, Ms. Tangalyn, you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25040, consider a memorandum resolution approving a lease agreement at the Clean Regional Airport with the General Services Administration.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Provost.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Colleen. The Clean Regional Airport leases administrative space within the terminal to the United States Government through the General Service Administration for use by the Transportation Security Administration, TSA. Their current lease is set to expire on March 7th, 2025, actually just expired. Staff has negotiated a lease agreement with the General Service Administration to rent the office space at the Clean Regional Airport. The term of the lease agreement is for a period of 17 years, beginning 1 May 2025 and ending March 6, 2042. The agreement will grant the tenant permission to use the space for office purposes and related activities. The tenant will pay a monthly rent of $10,848.42, not including monthly security and telephone fees outlined in the lease. This arrangement will generate annual revenue of $130,181 for the airport. Revenues will be deposited in the KRA Enterprise Fund. City Council, recommendation, City Council approve the lease agreement with the General Service Administration for a 17-year lease beginning on 1 May 2025 and authorize the city manager to execute same. Additionally authorize the city manager to execute all addendums and lease actions to the agreement, including termination to the extent allowed by city charter and the laws of the state of Texas. Depending on any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Provost. There are no questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25041, consider a memorandum resolution increasing the number of directors of the Clean Economic Development Corporation from nine to 10 to add one director from the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. This is the item decreasing, increasing the number of directors for the KEDC. Just a little bit of background, on March 4th, 2025, Council approved a motion in direction to add a seat to the KEDC Board of Directors for the President of the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce. The KEDC currently consists of nine directors, and that's three from the City of Colleen Mayor, City Council, three from the Greater Colleen Chamber of Commerce, and three from the Colleen Industrial Foundation. This action would increase the total number from nine to 10. The KEDC bylaws state that the number of directors may be increased or decreased by the Colleen City Council. So based on Council's direction, staff recommends increasing the number of directors of the KEDC from nine to 10 to add one director from the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
RS 25042, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to the Clean Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. This item is companion item to the previous item. City Council made appointments on October 1st, 2024, to boards and commissions. The Clean Economic Development Corporation Chamber of Commerce representative is Meredith Vigors. She has resigned, and the Greater Colleen Chamber of Commerce recommends Scott Cosper as the new Chamber of Commerce representative to replace Ms. Vigors. And then also, City Council approved the motion direction, we just discussed, on March 4th, 2025, to add a seat to the KEDC Board of Directors for the President of the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce. Ronnie Russell is the IBCC president. And the recommendation is to appoint Mr. Russell and Mr. Cosper in those spots.
Thank you. There are no questions for you. Madam City Secretary.
RS 25043, consider a memorandum resolution accepting a grant for Homeland Security Grant Program fiscal year 2025 for the Field Situational Awareness Program.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Oh, good afternoon. This is our emergency management director, Ms. Sarah Williams. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me.
Good to see you.
So today, I'm presenting to you to accept the Homeland Security Grant for funds to purchase VOC. The... Who, you advance? I'm sorry. Is it? Oh, there it is, right here? Yes. Go forward. There it goes. Okay, sorry, technical difficulties. The background is, the city has many special events, as you know, in mass gatherings and emergencies that require a coordinated effort to share information and resources to ensure the safety of residents and visitors. Currently, information during these events is shared between individuals via radio and other devices, but we don't have the capability to visualize that in a system for everybody to be able to share. The Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management staff submitted a grant application under the FY25 Homeland Security Grant Program and was awarded to purchase VOC, which is a cloud-based virtual EOC software. This proposed project is to purchase a one-year subscription to the VOC platform, which is a leader in online virtual EOC applications. This software will allow its users to rapidly and efficiently create an incident action plan, reports, share information with groups through forms and workflows, and visualize data in customizable dashboards. Users can access the information through an included mobile app and on most widely used browsers. This platform also has a potential to integrate with other systems owned and used by the city and to aid in information sharing between those platforms. The Homeland Security Grant Program requires a formal acceptance of the grant funds through a resolution by City Council. The cost of one-year subscription to VOC is $20,511 annually. The Texas Office of the Governor awarded $14,223 under the Homeland Security Grant Program with a local match of $6,288. This is an example of what the platform looks like when it's on one of these devices. As you'll see, there's the ability to view things in calendar mode. There's also an ability to view information on a map. It can integrate with GIS software as well as other information-based softwares that we may have and use, and allow us to share these things visually. Users can input information into the forms and workflows and be able to notify individuals when different tasks are being done and completed. And it's used by quite a few users across the state of Texas, including the Texas Division of Emergency Management. This is actually how we submit our plans for review with them. Recommendation, staff recommends the City Council accept the Homeland Security Grants funds and approve the purchase of a one-year subscription to the VOC platform and authorize city manager designee to be expressly authorized to execute any and all change orders set within the amount... change orders set within the amount set by the state and local law.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quick, couple of quick questions, we're currently using this?
We currently have access to use this platform with the Texas Division of Emergency Management to submit our plans, but that's the only function we're able to do with it at this time.
Okay, and is there a plan for outlying years to continue, and will we still be able to apply for follow-on grants afterwards?
So typically with the Homeland Security Grant Program, they sometimes, sometimes they will allow for, to us to seek additional funds in additional years to maintain these types of systems, but we would have to reapply every year.
Okay, so Ms. Kate, was this going to become a future budget item?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. That's all I have, Mayor.
Are there any other questions from the council? Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25044, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2522 Stagecoach Reconstruction Phase 1 to JHL Construction in the amount of $7,716,902.72.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Mr. Zager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, fellow council members. So we're here to present the bid award for Stagecoach. I know this is a long-awaited project that everyone's been anxious for, so we're moving forward. For background, in the fiscal year '22 is when the project was added to the capital improvement plan, included the Stagecoach reconstruction as part of the other street reconstruction projects we have. It was part of the obligation bond that was issued in fiscal year '22, and then this project is phase one of the overall replacement. We're looking at replacing the whole road from Easternmere all the way to 195, but we're doing it in sections as we can based on available funding. So this project is phase one, and it starts on the east end at Easternmere and extends all the way to WS Young. We, Pape Dawson was the engineer who provided the design services and also assisted us with the bids. Bids were opened and read aloud on February 20th of this year. We received six bids, which is great, we're actually getting some, some interest in a lot of our projects. JHL was the lowest responsible bidder at $7,716,902.72. This kind of, this figure kind of shows the overall project limits for Stagecoach reconstruction in red. This portion of the, for phase is the area that's shown in blue. Once we get this project going under construction, we will then proceed moving westward as we get funds available. And then staff recommends the City Council award bid 2522 to JHL Construction for the construction of Stagecoach Phase 1 Road Reconstruction Project in the amount of $7,716,902.72, and then authorize the city manager and his or designee to enter into contract with JHL and authorize city manager to execute all, and all change orders in the amount set by state and local law.
Thank you, Mr. Zager, this is your first time speaking as a director, engineer director.
I didn't realize that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, but you have always done an excellent job, and Stagecoach has always been the talk of the town, when we're going to get the Stagecoach, and we went through a lot of changes, and you stayed with it, you and your team, and I just want to commend you and your team for your dedication and bringing this to the council to vote on. Thank you for all the hard work.
I think this is a good project to be number one, then.
Yes, sir, number one. With that being said, you do have three council members that would like to ask questions.
Okay.
So we will start with Councilmember Sagara.
Thank you, Mayor. I came on the council in 2012, and this is one of the things that's been there all that time since 2012, so I appreciate it. This is an exciting day, I'm now sure that, you know, people will start complaining about the traffic, the construction going on, but I think they'll be happy with it. The question I had for you is, if you can let people know, what is going to be different this time? You know, we don't want the same thing to happen when we do all this construction, and then in a few years, few months, because the other, when it's originally done, it only took a few months for this road to start, you know, cracking, so what's going to be different this time?
So we went and did a more thorough review of, of the pavement. We, you also recall, we've changed our pavement design standards, so we require the roads, especially in our Terry Roads, to be a lot thicker. So if you think of the layers of a cake, this, this one's going to have more layers, more thickness of asphalt, the base, the gravel underneath is going to be a lot thicker, but we're also going to be treating the base, or the subgrade. The native soils are a lot of clay, so we're going to be adding lime, we're going to be stabilizing it, making it more of a, a surface that'll be manageable and hold up a lot better. So overall, the roadway section from top to the bottom is going to be about 18 inches compared to the eight to 10 that are out there now, so it'll be something that should last a lot longer, we're treating the base, it'll be a little more resilient to that traffic, able to carry those larger loads at the amount of traffic that's on there, and then get it back to that 20-year age life where we could start doing preventative maintenance throughout the life of it.
Are we, are they offering like any type of warranty? We got like a year warranty, two years warranty?
We typically do not have that with our CIP. We do with our developments, but we don't have those performance bonds. We have it while we're going under construction. Obviously, we know what happened with the last contractor, that's past it, but we do feel that as we go moving forward with this project, it should, it'll definitely last a lot longer.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Mayor. How, how long will phase one take, or expect, expected to take?
This one's probably going to be eight to 10 months. I don't remember the exact days we had in the contract, but you know, we are going, you know, we're going to cut it to half at a time, so we're going to shift traffic to one side, have it that, I know, two lanes of traffic each way, and then go half and then flip traffic and do it again.
Yeah, I think most of us are used to only using one lane either way, or the center lane. Has JHL Construction ever done work with the city?
Not that I'm aware of, they're, they're, I think, believe out of McGregor.
And then, we have any safeguards on overruns?
We do have that contingency item for some of the smaller ones. This project is a little lower risk than some of the other ones, because all we're doing is the asphalt and the roadway itself, we're leaving the, we're leaving the, the sidewalks, we're not going past the roadway itself, so we already know the depths of the, the pipes, the water lines, everything, because we have the plans from the last time it was built, so don't anticipate a whole lot of unforeseen sort of things, because we've already know, if anything, it'll be the base, and we can already have that addressed in the contract.
Okay, and then last question is, I know, even with the other projects that you're overseeing, is, do we have, or can we do something that, like a public facing site just to, people could go to the, highlight the, the progress of the road?
We can, we're working on looking at updating our website, putting more of, you know, we have the, the quarterly report, we have the graphic that we do. I think we'll definitely do a press release as we start moving this one forward, and again, we have those resources that the public can always go to and find out what the status of the project is.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Adams had asked some of my questions, they were answered. When do we, Mr. Zager, I'm excited about this, because it's open in the District 2 area, starting there, when do we plan to project this start date?
So after today, we then have to get into the contract, getting the contracts all signed, that, and that takes a couple weeks, because the contractor's going to have to get their bonding and documents, that usually takes two to three weeks. Contracts will rattle pretty quicker, and a little quicker these days, so probably about three, three weeks into this month is when we'll have the contract, set up that pre-construction meeting, then it'll really depend on when that contractor can mobilize. I would imagine middle of May is when we're looking at the earliest of having him out there, starting, moving some dirt.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to mention, and thank you for asking that question, Councilman Solomon, I had that one, but this is just outstanding news. I just want to highlight for our citizens that we've got several roads that are and will be under reconstruction, rightfully so that need to be, that we've been concerned about and driving on and have been working changes with those vehicles over time, so those include Bunny Trail, Watercrest, Stagecoach, we have plans for Chaparral, Mohawk, this is just great, making progress, and I'm not just talking about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor, this is just a quick alibi, because this was already designed, I know, but are there any environmental consideration that we have to consider for this new project?
No, this is a reconstruction within the roadway limits, we're not changing any drainage. Any drainage work we're actually looking at doing will be on the west end closer to 195, and it's just modifying what's already existing, so we, we're not going to have to do any environmental reviews, any, any wetlands or anything impacting, we're solely focused right in the roadway itself.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from council? Mr. Zager, they always say when you see construction going on in a city, it's work in progress, so thank you, you got a lot of projects going on, you're a busy, busy person, but thank you and your team for everything you do.
Thank you, I'll pass it on.
You're welcome. Madam Secretary.
RS 25045, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing adoption of the 2024 Water and Wastewater Master Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Zager?
Okay, I'd like to, this is the project to kind of present and work towards adoption of our waste, our Water and Wastewater Master Plan. This has been updated every five years, but this is kind of a prelude as we get into funding, dealing with some of the older projects and some of the new ones as we want to work in the future. We have Stephanie Nieses with Fries and Nichols, the consultant that worked on this, that will be doing the main presentation of this project, and then we also have Steve Cagna, the Assistant City Engineer in charge of the water and sewer projects, available for any questions as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ma'am and sir.
Hi, good afternoon.
So you can come up with her if you want to.
Good afternoon, yes, as Andrew said, I'm Stephanie Nieses, I'm an engineer with Fries and Nichols and was the project manager for the Water and Wastewater Master Plan that was recently completed. So just a little bit of background, the previous master plan was adopted in 2019, so as Andrew mentioned, we do like to recommend master plans get updated about every five years, so we're on that cycle with this recently completed plan. Master plan consists of growth projections, a system evaluation of both the water and the wastewater systems, and then development of capital improvement plans, I'll go over each one of those in a little bit more detail. And really, the purpose of the master plan is just to help prioritize projects, to identify future funding, and make sure we're planning for all the projects that are needed on both of those systems. So on the growth projections, this is really the foundation of the master plan, it really dictates where those improvements are going to be needed. So we coordinated with City Planning Department as well as the, the comprehensive plan that was done in 2022, making sure to be consistent with all the other city planning documents for consistency there. And you can see, this map to the side kind of shows our projections. As part of the comprehensive plan, there was this infill and enhance area from kind of up north in, in already developed areas, so we incorporated some of that information, as well as information from known developments, which are shown kind of in this light purple color throughout the service area. So both kinds of growth kind of extending out into undeveloped areas as well as focusing on redevelopment or infill development in established areas. We did projections for five-year, 10-year, and 25-year conditions, so we have our population projections down there, and then the overall population for the whole service area was identified, and then we use census tracts to kind of identify where that growth may occur. That's really important when we look at the master plan, to make sure we're putting projects where we think that growth is going to happen, so we can get water and wastewater service to the appropriate areas. So on the water system, like I said, all the projects are based on that projected growth. We look at regulatory compliance, system operations, as well as pressure maintenance throughout the system, making sure everyone has appropriate pressure, and we phase those improvements into short-term, intermediate, and long-term projects. So you can see the map here, this is the City of Colleen's water system. All the projects identified in red generally recommended within the next five years. The blue projects are in that 10-year window, and then there's a couple green projects there that are kind of longer term, that 25-year window. So most of the projects here you see are pipeline extensions or upsize of transmission lines that convey water from the water source into the distribution system. We also have a ground storage tank identified in the upper pressure plane, which maintains compliance for elevated storage for the system. And then further out, we have two pump station expansions, just need to increase capacity there as demand increases for that growth that's been identified. Here is a list of all those projects and the cost estimates that were developed for each project. You can see we have six projects there in the, in the short term for the water, totaling a little over $37 million. Another five projects in that intermediate phase, just over $27 million, and then three projects in that longer-term phase, the 25-year window, at $14.5 million. So total on the water system, the CIP is just under $79 million. And then similar approach on the wastewater system, so again, based on that same growth projections that we had done at the beginning of the project, also looking at regulatory compliance on the wastewater system, and it's also important to look at peak flow conveyance, so not only just average flows that folks are using in their homes and businesses. On the wastewater side, we look at peak flow conveyance, which typically happens during a storm event or a wet weather event, when we have rainwater or stormwater getting into the collection system. We need to make sure that we can convey all of that flow without having any overflows or spills out of the collection system. So again, we, we phase projects into short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term phase. This map shows the, the city's collection system, and you can see, again, red projects are those short-term projects within the next five years, blue projects are in that 10-year window, and then a couple green projects for that 25-year horizon. So on the wastewater side, a lot of gravity line extensions, servicing areas that either don't have service or need larger lines, and then several lift station expansions where we increase the capacity to pump that wastewater and convey it all the way to the treatment plants. So here's our list on the wastewater side, short-term improvements, three projects there, $17.7 million. Another six projects in the 10-year planning period for just under $23 million, and then two final projects in that long-term phase at $8.5 million. So on the wastewater side, we are just over $49 million for wastewater CIP. And then finishing up here with just some funding alternatives discussion, the 2025 Water and Wastewater Revenue Bond, I understand there's a later presentation, so I won't go into details there, but that's typically how the city has funded these types of capital improvements. You also have the Water and Wastewater Impact Fees, currently averaging about $139,000 per month in combined revenue. And noting here that the current program will be updated to include these new projects that were identified in this master plan, so that those impact fee eligible projects get on the next impact fee update. And then we do have some information on state and federal funding programs, really those fall under two categories, grants and low-interest loans. So there is limited availability on the grant side, typically for projects, for green projects and for disadvantaged communities. On the low-interest loan side, you can get reduced interest rates, but typically those programs have some additional requirements and costs and usually time associated with getting funding on that side. Mark is our funding expert, so if anybody has questions on specific programs, I will defer to him. But just some additional things to consider for the funding, project schedules usually drive funding options, so as I said, there's usually additional time associated with, with those types of state and federal funding programs. So we're looking at two to three years out before you need those projects in order to start securing those funding options. And really, in our analysis, looking at this CIP, there were no kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will, for significant savings, just based on current interest rates that the city, city gets and the programs that are available. But we do recommend kind of continuing evaluating those funding options and, and kind of folding it into the overall financial strategies and looking a little further out at some of those funding options. I think that's my last slide, and Andrew was going to take this, but do you have any questions, I guess, as we wrap up on our questions, I guess, as we wrap up on our stuff?
Currently, there are, oh, yes, we do. I apologize at the last moment. Councilmember Adams, and then Councilmember Boyd.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Sorry for that. When, as we were putting this together, did we look at, so we have areas that might still considered rural county area, and then we have some of our very old areas. Are we, was that taken in consideration in the development?
So, we did look at basically everything within the current city limits and what we refer to as the conveniency, certificate of convenience and necessity on the water side. So, you can see there is a little bit of shading that goes past down the city limits, so we did look at that, but not really out in the rural areas.
When I say rural, I mean like, like the donut hole.
Oh, yes.
Because that's in city limits.
Yeah, so anything kind of shaded this green-blue color on the map, as well as kind of purple to the side, but that pastel shading is all of the existing service area that we looked at. And we looked at existing areas, making sure that existing customers still maintain service as we grow in the different areas.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd, and then Councilwoman Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is in relation to 195. I'm just curious, at some point, we're going to prioritize pushing distribution lines out there to accommodate that growth in the future. I know that there's been a conversation sometime in the past, and we've been sticking more to the center of the city in accordance with the comprehensive plan, but at some point, our growth is going to be extending just down 195, and I would very much recommend the council, especially in the future, to consider prioritizing water improvement projects down 195. That's going to be important. So, I'd like to ask if that was a part of the discussions at all?
We did, and we didn't identify any specific developments along 195. However, we have looked at that area in the past and have kind of a separate plan that shows improvements as you kind of grow to the south, but weren't part of any near-term projects identified for this.
I see. That's one of those, one of those deals where you got to kind of look into the future, long-range planning and things like that. Thank you.
And before you speak, Councilwoman Cobb, I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Boyd. As we move in toward future focus, like you stated on this 195, I see the challenge that we have with be funding. That's one, especially at the federal level, grants and things of that nature. But as we continue to grow, we still have to go back and fix items that have wear and tear on it. So, I think I agree with you. You're right on point, and I thank you all for being focused 20 years out. That's great. But the council challenge, I guess when we both leave, will be how you fund this growth and continue to keep the maintenance on the systems that we already have in place. I think that's the biggest challenge they will have coming in the near future. With that being said, Councilwoman Cobb.
Thank you.
I am looking at the figures, I'm a figures person, and I'm looking at those impact fees and how much it's going to bring. To me, when I look at this, this is very hard to look at this plan, to look at money that we don't have and match it with the money that we have. What does that mean? How does that work? Do we stop when we run out of money? How do we continue? Do we go and do these projects knowing in the beginning there's not enough money? If we just look at impact fees, I'm looking at what we can bring in and what we don't have in.
I'm not part of the impact fee study, so I might have to defer to Andrew, but I will say impact fees are only for growth-related projects too, so it does kind of limit how you can use that money.
Exactly.
But, yeah.
So, when we look at a plan like this, yes, you're always going to get more projects, more dollars than what you have available. That's part of the plan. And so, you're looking at those priorities. How do you prioritize those projects that the low-hanging fruit, the ones that we can do ourselves, fund, you know, accordingly? Again, there's also, you look at the funding sources. Impact fees are a way to address the growth, the growth-related projects, the upsizing, the difference between the existing and the brand-new lines. Part of the next step we're going to be doing, and we're already working with a consultant, is to update our impact fees to account for all these projects, so that number most likely will go up. The amount of the impact fee will probably go up because of the cost of what it takes to do these projects. The other thing that these plans help us is when developments come in, so for those donut holes, those areas where we have a project on Mohawk that we show on the map, but that is really driven by the development. So, those developers are going to come in, they're going to develop those lands, they're going to install a water line or a sewer line. They may be required, based on their development, to do a six-inch or an eight-inch, and our plan shows doing a 12-inch. Well, that's what those developer agreements are. The plans help us, you know, do the review, work with the developer to get what we need in the future, but then work with those development agreements to get what we need ultimately, not just what's based on those developments. So, the plan's the first step. We get that in place, we get the projects that we can first, but then we also use that as a tool to plan for the future, and then how we can get those accomplished.
How do we choose the projects that we can do first? Because every constituent and every person on every part of the road wants their roles in water and everything complete, done, pronto.
Typically, you know, hand it back over to Friesen Nichols, because they have a model, that we have a water and a sewer model, so you look at those ones that, on a timeframe, which are the most important ones that we have to do first? Which are the ones that, you know, when you see this area where we need a storage tank over there off of 195, to work with that upper pressure plane? That's something that, you know, we see based on growth. It triggers sooner than later, so we have to address that. So, that's that five-year, 10-year, 25-year type projects. We got to focus on the five-year first, and typically, that's why we do this. And then, once we get out of that five years, we're doing another master plan to see if there's any new triggers or any new projects that may come up.
And my last question, if there is a project that's been going on forever and we have not completed, still needs work, and there's another project that comes up that may be quicker, less money, and we can get done, how will you choose?
We look at what's needed first. There may be a project that's on there for a long time, and I'll say the donut hole, there's a sewer line on Onion Road, but that is driven by the need. So, once development comes in, you will have a need for that. It's not needed today. There's not enough development, there's not enough to push it to justify spending that money. So, our recommendation would be do the one that we need to do now, based on our existing system. You know, there could be other priorities. Council may have a priority of, let's put the sewer line in now and hope people come. I mean, that's, that's part of the reason we always bring these projects and we bring them to councils, is what is driven. You're ultimately the ones who are going to make the decisions on which ones, you know, we recommend, which ones are approved.
I guess that wasn't my last question. My other question, I understand, I understand the fees, the money, the projects, what's needed and what's not needed, but the hardest thing it is to do is to explain that your need is lesser than the greater need.
We have to make those decisions, and I think what we have to, we have, that's why we do analysis, that's why we do figures, that's why we hire consultants to help guide us and give us that direction. And then, yes, it's going to be a numbers game, and that's kind of what we have to base this, you know.
So, with this numbers game, we can have our town halls, as we've done in the past, bring our constituents out and explain and let them see it for themselves, so they won't think that we're leaving them in the dark, but we're bringing them in the future and forward with us.
And we, I mean, that's the purpose, is getting that public opinion, is to help, obviously, guide decision by the city.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the council? Mr. Zager.
I have one more slide.
I want to piggyback on what you just said.
Okay.
You mentioned that the impact fees in the future will increase, but would that also be for developer fees and everything, would everything increase because of supply and demand, the costs will go up?
So, as it relates to the water and sewer, we have to focus on the impact fees. That's based on the fee that we accept, that we collect, based on growth, the growth need. Developer fees, developer, I mean, that, that's, we're not, we're not looking at that, we're just going to be focusing solely on the impact fees as it relates to the master plan and these projects.
All right, and my next question, and if I'm off-subject, City Attorney, please get me back on, because I'm going to speak on the donut hole. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So, you had mentioned that, and Councilwoman Cobb said something that caught my attention, is that the growth in that area, and there's not a demand, and I'm assuming your growth mean development houses or growth and businesses, either or?
Yes, as land develops and there's a need to have that public sewer, right now, in one portion of the donut hole, they're on septic, and so, we ultimately want to have a public sewer, we want to get the public, there's water lines, but we don't have a public sewer. As that area develops, they need to have that sewer utility in place. So, that drives the need for getting that over there. Right now, there just isn't that development in that area that really needs to have that sewer extended. Another thing is, we work with developers on agreements. A Thousand Oaks, right now, is building a sewer line at their east corner that is a portion of our capital project. They're going to bring that sewer line from Easternmere through their property up to Stagecoach, which is a portion of ultimately one of our CIP projects. And eventually, we will extend it up, you know, go up the channel and make our way to Onion Road, but we were waiting for when we need to have to do that. Mohawk, there's a water line that goes along, that's proposed along Mohawk and goes east-west over to 195, and then cuts north to Stan Schluter, but it's all undeveloped land right now, and we're waiting for developers to come in so we can actually work with them to get those lines in.
Okay, and I thank you for going in that detail. That stopped me from asking you two more questions, because it's important. We throw stuff in the atmosphere, and the people that keep on saying, going back to Councilwoman Cobb, I want it now, but they have to be explained in detail why it's not happening in that particular area. You always and your team does a great job always, so thank you for that. Councilwoman Cobb, you had used up all your questions. I'm sorry. Yes, sir, you can continue.
Okay, so we have one more slide. As required, since we have that CI committee, it is a committee that's a requirement because of our impact fees, they are also required to review and comment on the master plan. So, we did have two meetings on the 26th and March 12th with the CI committee to go over and get their comments as it related to the master plan. Their comments are to be presented to council and, you know, used for your use and consideration on this item. So, overall, they did like the master plan, that was their first comment, and then they started diving into the, a little more of their concerns. They were concerned about the impact fees, since that is one of the primary reasons, and then how the impact fees are calculated. Our impact fees now are calculated as a city as a whole is one big area. We don't have it separated into zones, whether it be the north part of town, south part of town, or quarters. That was a kind of a decision in the past, because as where the projects are located, if you were to separate and make the zone smaller, it would, it would give you variable rates on your impact fees depending where you're at. Some areas in the north part of town may be more expensive than the south part, based on the projects. So, as we, you know, we mentioned, as we move forward with our impact fee analysis, we're going to relook at that, see if that's a possibility, or what can we do that actually benefits the city as a whole to get the project done, but also be reasonable to the fee as it relates to what the developers are going to be having to pay. So, that was one concern that they mentioned, and that is something we'll be looking at as we impact, as we review and update our impact fees. They, a couple of the members also had a comment that they felt that we should have more emphasis outside the city limits, you know, so have the master plan, look at south of town, in the ETJ, why weren't we addressing that? I mean, we, our emphasis, you know, as I think was mentioned in the presentation, was in the city limits. Where is our existing system? As it relates to the ETJ, we rely on developers to extend our systems. We don't plan on building new water lines outside of city limits. We wait for those developers to come in, and then if they want to come into town and X out of the ETJ or use our, come to an agreement with our water systems, we rely on them to build it. So, that was kind of the main reason why I think our master plan doesn't address that. But again, that was one of their comments. And then, again, the thing was, again, with the concern of the impact fees and how they're assessed, and that obviously will be coming back to council as we, we will look at it.
Thank you. With that being said, Mr. Kegel would like to speak.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, just in regards to your point about sewer and the donut hole, all we're talking about, I think people need to understand, we're talking about the public line. So, if you're in that area on a large lot and we run a sewer line, people aren't going to tie on, because when you think about it, they have a septic tank behind their house. In order to tie on, they're going to have to close that out, they're going to have to trench around from the house, the back around, up to the front, and if it's in rock, sometimes those costs can be $50,000 to $70,000 just to connect to the public sewer. So, if you're ever, my recommendation, if we ever only run a sewer line into areas that are large lot, you ought to have a mandatory tie-on ordinance, because the worst thing you can do is to run a sewer line and no one ties on, and you've just wasted your money and you have empty pipe laying in the ground. Secondly, in regards to impact fees and the overall development of the system, the funding comes from two sources, existing ratepayers or future ratepayers. That's where all the money comes from, and the idea behind impact fees is that the new ratepayers ought to pay more of their share. What good is growth if it costs the existing ratepayers? And when you look at over the next 25 years, based on how we're collecting impact fees, now that's about $35 million, and you just saw $130 million worth of projects. Now, not all of those are growth-related, admittedly, but there's definitely room to increase those impact fees, and even if we charge the max, understand it right, we're still only paying 50%, right?
Yeah, there's a state law requirement of 50% of the assessed, is all you can charge right now.
Yep. Thank you.
And with that being said, Mr. Kegel, I thought, and Mr. Zager, you can answer this, I thought we was trying to get everyone off the septic tanks and get them connected to a sewer, and maybe I thought we had this conversation in 2017, 18, 19, maybe I missed it.
Ultimately, we are. I mean, long-term, that is a great plan, and we want to make sure that all septic systems go away within the city limits, but in these areas where you have those large lots, those big undeveloped areas, it's more feasible to let those stay there, again, without having, you know, an empty line, because it is costly. We don't have a program in place anymore to force or pay for those connections to those homes, and that was done in the past. We did have that, and maybe something the city considers in the future, but how do we absorb those costs? Because it could be costly, because you're dealing with abandonment and then connection.
Yes, sir, and with that being said, I'm just going to, just one more. Since we know, per what Mr. Kegel said, the individuals that live in that area, and if we make, put a requirement in place, and we do get development over there in five years, 10, 15, 20, and we know that the residents, it will cost them a lot to make that transition to connect to our sewer lines, I would hope that we will have some, something in place to assist them with this transition as development and growth starts in the donut hole, because I can honestly say, since I've been here since 2017, that has been a thorn in their flesh in reference to being left behind. I mean, yes, everything is costly, and I do understand right now it may not happen, but we know our ultimate goal is to get everyone on the same sewer system. We know that, and we need to move forward. Future focus, future focus on what's going to happen in these under-development areas due to not having development. All right, with that being said, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. So, a question on the funding mechanisms, I know that Councilmember Cobb had brought up that concern, which is realistic, but when we're looking at the water plans, this plan also would help us be able to justify any future grant opportunities, as long as they're available, of course. Is that correct?
That is.
So, in the future, it's not, we're not looking at the overall impact strictly on our citizens, if it's available in the future?
Having this document does allow us to apply for those grants, apply for those loans. It's a backup, it's something that show that the city is committed, and we have a plan.
So, there might be a source to help offset some of those costs in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Madam, Mr. Kegel, did you have anything else? Madam Secretary.
RS 25046, consider a memorandum resolution approving a petition for release from the city of Colleen extraterritorial jurisdiction submitted by Mac Purifoy. from the City of Colleen extraterritorial jurisdiction submitted by Mac Purifoy for approximately 20 acres out of the W. Allen survey, abstract number 24. The subject property is locally addressed as 8524 Brewer Lane, Salado, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Mrs. Messer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is a request for release from the ETJ. As you know, the Texas Legislature passed Senate Bill 2038, which allows property owners to request release from the ETJ, which became effective on September 1st, 2023. On February 10th, we received a petition for release from the ETJ from Mr. Mac Purifoy for the property locally addressed as 8524 Brewer Lane. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial showing, showing the property boundary relative to the ETJ itself. And as you know, if a municipality fails to take action on a request, it's, it is released as a matter of law. And again, the local government code states that the ETJ may only be reduced by action of the governing body. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the petition for release from the ETJ. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
OR 25006, consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sell of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series 2025, for capital projects.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mrs. Tangler.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. These slides are the same as the one that we showed for the notice of intent to issue the bond, which has a couple of changes. We had the background and we added that on February 4th, council approved the publication on the notice intent. And then we talked about the solution or intention, what it meant and what it was for. And this was our priority project list for the bond. The remaining steps, we are in April 1st. The bids were received on the CO and everybody should have a copy of it. And the city council considers an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the CO. And on April 22nd, will be the closing and funds delivered. We added the bid stabbing here. And obviously, we recommend the Hilltop Securities. And the recommendation is the city council approved the ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series 2025, for capital projects. I also have Marfoller from McCold, Parhurts and Horton. It's our bond counsel firm here. And Dan White Miller from the Specialized Public Finance to assist, answer any questions that you may have.
Councilman, thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Real quick question. What effect does one of these issues that will have on our future borrowing capability? If you can ask. That was a question that I was asked a couple of weeks.
I think Dan came to help me answer that question.
Thanks.
They always come over here and they never get to tax. So thank you.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you. Dan White Miller with Specialized Public Finance. It's a great question. The legal capacity of the city far exceeds what the practical capacity is, which is what your tax rate or utility rates if it's a utility-funded project. So you've got still quite a bit of capacity, especially as you look at tax rate room within your budget. So each year, we can work with looking at capacities. But this doesn't shift the capacity. It's really going to be driven by your tax rate that you choose to move it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kegel, would you like to speak?
Sure. We need to talk about, are you going to get to the interest rate and the results of the bid?
Yes, definitely. I have, I can say, I sent Mr. Kegel a text today. We received the bids today, and that's why it takes so long to get that slide in there. But the average interest was 4.5. However, we got a premium of $1.9 million. So the net interest cost is 4.15% and the true interest cost is 4.05. And that's the cost that you have in here. So this reflects the, actually, I didn't mention that when we have our our application for rating on the CO, we also got a double A, confirmed a double A rating after that call. And that reflects our interest. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if I may, part of that bond writing process is kind of unique because you have your audit report that was presented today. But within that report, that S&amp;P double A rating is two notches from the highest rating possible, which is triple A. That rating is great news for you all, but that's what investors are making their decision on whether they want to buy or not. And just a couple of comments from the report itself. It says that the rating recognizes the broad and diverse taxpayer base of the City of Colleen. It also recognizes the consistently positive financial performance, supporting maintenance of healthy reserves in line with formal policy levels that you all have taken. It also noted, notes the comprehensive level of those policies that guide you through the process. And again, it's a stable outlook. So they're not only looking at this issue, they're taking into account the bond referendum that you have. And so they're looking forward and saying if that passes, they're still comfortable with these levels.
Thank you so much. That is good news to hear. Thank you. Any Councilwoman Cobb?
Sir, in layman's terms, yes, we're understanding because we're reading. We don't know what you just said. What in bottom line, if a constituent was sitting in this room, never heard any of this, what does that mean?
That means, for example, if you're borrowing money for a car, for a house, and you go into the bank or file a credit application, and you may score low, you may score middle of the road, or you may score high, and that drives all your borrowing costs down. And in this case, you're scoring nearly as high as possible within that, that matrix.
So that means that the investment into this would be good because of our scoring and because of our report earlier?
Absolutely. So again, that report is being used by investors, not just you all. And I think that's why you have eight bidders. These are investment banking firms all over the country expressing interest in putting money in City of Colleen.
I wanted to make sure everyone understood this, sir. Thank you.
Thank you both. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Thank you too, sir. Madam Secretary.
PH 25011, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Quintero Engineering LLC on behalf of Nozad Realty LLC, Flume 2501, to amend the future land use map designation for approximately 0.59 acres out of the John Essery survey, abstract number 296, from floodplain to neighborhood commercial. The subject property is locally addressed as 3019 Florence Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mrs. Messer has the next two items also. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a request for a future land use map amendment. As noted in the caption, the property is currently designated floodplain, and the request is to change that designation to neighborhood commercial. If approved, the applicant intends to rezone the property to B3, local business district, for use as a convenience store. The red star indicates the location of the property. On the left hand of your, side of your screen is the existing future land use map. And on the right-hand side of your screen is the proposed change to the future land use map. This is an exhibit showing the floodplain with the area of the proposed request highlighted in yellow. So you can see here, it is almost entirely located outside of the floodplain. This is a view of the subject property facing west from Florence Road. This is a view of the property across the street. This is a view facing north along Florence Road, the subject property on the left. Again, the property is currently designated floodplain, which is intended to capture the vast majority of undeveloped land located within the floodplain as designated by FEMA. And the request is to change the designation to neighborhood commercial. Floodplain designation of the property is due to the existence of the floodplain on the northern and western portions of the parcel. So the area that's, again, proposed to be changed is not within the floodplain. But there is floodplain on the parcel, the larger parcel itself. Neighborhood commercial place type is predominantly an extension of the traditional neighborhood place type and promotes a use mix of up to 100% non-residential and up to 25% residential. Staff's determination that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and that the requested neighborhood commercial place type is also consistent with the neighborhood's evolving character and that a proposed convenience store in this location would have, would benefit the neighborhood. Staff also finds that the proposed development will have no negative impact on the city's ability to provide and fund, provide, fund and maintain services. Development of the subject property will be required to mitigate any increase in stormwater runoff via onsite detention, management of impervious cover, or other generally accepted methods. And as such, staff does not anticipate any negative impacts to the environmentally sensitive areas as a result of the proposed development. Again, the current zoning of the property is R3 and is currently undeveloped. The surrounding area includes a mix of residential uses to the north, east and west, and an existing church, zone B5 to the south. We notified 28 surrounding property owners regarding this request. And to date, staff has received no written responses. This is the notification boundary for this request. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, I'm sorry. The regular meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended disapproval by a vote of five to one with Commissioners Jacomozi, Commissioner Jacomozi voting in opposition to the motion. He stated that he supported the request because the property is predominantly located outside of the floodplain. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Messer.
Good evening.
Did the applicant communicate what the intent was to develop on the tract?
Yes, sir. The intent is to rezone it to B3 and subsequently develop a convenience store on the property.
Convenience store, okay, specifically. Is the subject property in the flood zone?
No.
Is the subject property outside of the flood zone?
It is nearly entirely outside of the floodplain. There is a little tiny corner of the requested area that's within the boundary.
And that's important because we wouldn't want anyone to develop anything in a floodplain. I understand staff recommends approval, PNC recommends disapproval. Did staff receive any written responses regarding the request for or against?
No.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you mentioned already that the staff, that the property owner is going to have to make some adjustments to mitigate any risk.
As with any development of any property, the proposed development can't increase the rate of flow.
Right.
So that's why you typically see onsite detention.
And that's normally done in the planning process and the...
That's correct. So this is just the land use, this is the future land use map amendment request. So after this, there would be a request to rezone the property. And following that, the applicant would plot it and then submit development plans.
This was based off an, off an older map. Do we need to review our process for what was declared as a floodplain?
I'll probably defer to Andrew Zager's on that question. I won't see him here, but...
And then I saw what the next, what the dissent of, I mean. Do we need to check, you heard the question already?
I did hear the question about the floodplain. So we're in the process of updating our drainage master plan. There is a phase as part of that to update or develop a citywide drainage model and update the maps. We applied for a grant through FEMA to assist in the funding for that. It is a very large fee and a lot of work tasks to do that, to create the model and update those maps.
Okay. At a meeting I went to last week, I think this, some, I'm not sure what state agency, there's a possibility of something coming, and I'll get with you about that separately.
That would be great.
But as we, as we, as we talk about this, though, is this, having someone having to come to request to do something and majority of the land is outside of the floodplain, do we need to change how we... Because this, I guess this was, it kind of expanded when it was determined. Do we need to change how we do that?
So I think when we get to the point where we actually have a citywide model, we can see what we're looking at on floodplains and what areas, you know, based on new curves, you know, that have been developed. I think at that point, we can then develop the policies and the rules that we need to set in place.
Okay. Thanks. And the last question I have is for Ms. Messer. You, what was the general reason for the disapprove, well, the motion to disapprove at PNC? I saw what Mr. Jacomozi said.
I think the primary concern was the existence of floodplain adjacent to the property.
Which was required to be mitigated by the...
Correct. And I'll also add that when we created the future land use map with the comprehensive plan in 2022, the decision was made to essentially designate any tract, any parcel that had a preponderance of floodplain on it was designated as floodplain, even though not every piece of that property is within the floodplain. So in other words, there are parcels that are designated floodplain that have developable proportions. So in this case, they have to get the Flume Amendment before they can request the zoning. But the property, the portion of the property that they're proposing to develop is outside the floodplain.
And that's because of the pre-mitigating circumstances, correct? I vaguely remember, because it's a possibility that floodplain could always shift.
That's correct. Yeah, it could. Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Not working. There it is. I just want to bring out, Mr. Adams asked, you know, why they voted against. But I'm reading here and it says, one of them was, says that there was a stream that runs into Turtle Creek that will be negatively impacted by the proposed development. Can you talk about that a little bit?
I don't know of any reason that it would be negatively impacted.
Okay, that's what I want. I'm just, that's, these are the people that spoke at the PNC and this is kind of the concerns that they brought up. But that's one of them. It says there's a stream that runs into Turtle Creek that would be negatively impacted by this.
On the north part of the property where it showed in the floodplain on the slide, that actually is the floodway. So that is a tributary to that stream that goes into Turtle Creek. You have the floodway, then you have the flood zone next to it. That was, I think, the concern is that, you know, majority of this property is in that floodway, flood zone area. But the request is that little corner that's outside of it.
So it won't have any negative effects?
The developer will be required to mitigate what anything they do is for what they're proposing to build.
Okay. And then the other one was something about a buffer zone that extends past what our map reflects as part of the floodplain?
The buffer zone would be anything in regard to the creek itself. That's the only buffer that we acknowledge based on our plans. And that's going to be based on the center line of the creek or the channel. That is, in this case, we've got the flood zone, which actually goes outside of that. So that's, whatever buffer there is, is actually within the shaded area of the map.
Okay. Yeah. And then the last one, it's just green space. And I think that's up to the owner, whether they want to do green space or not, you know? We don't want to tell people. But those are the concerns that were raised in according to our minutes here. So I just want to get your response on it. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Zagers and Mrs. Messer, I know both of you attend the planning and zoning meeting. And there are some topics that are, we'll have more people to come out and speak on than others. And I think Councilmember Segura did a great job. When they give comments like that, when they speak against it, it's important when you come and present to us because we don't attend. We hear a lot what happened there. You may read about it. That we can answer those questions upfront. So let them know that we are listening to what you said in planning and zoning. Staff, you have time to research it. And then when you come and present it, they are already answered and the council won't have to ask those questions. If that's just something to take on the consideration, I think it'd be good customer service. All right. Thank you. But there is no more questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 25012, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Republic Engineering and Development Services on behalf of 5011 Cunningham Road, Colleen, Texas LLC, case number Z2504, to rezone approximately 20... rezone approximately 22.91 acres out of the T Cunningham survey, abstract number 199, being lots 71 through 74 out of the Llewellyn Estates, number three, unrecorded subdivision, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District to Planned Unit Development District, PUD, with SF2 Single Family Residential District and RT1 Residential Townhouse Single Family District uses. The subject property is locally addressed as 5011 Cunningham Road, Colleen, Texas. Requires a three-fourth majority vote.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Messer.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This item is a request to rezone approximately 22.91 acres located on Cunningham Road to a planned unit development. If approved, the applicant intends to build a, a build-to-rent community comprised of 80 dwelling units, including 55 single-family units and 25 townhome units on a single platted lot. All streets within the proposed development would be private and maintained by the property owner. The red star indicates the location of the subject property. So this is an aerial of the subject property. As you can see, it's currently undeveloped. It has access off of Cunningham, and there would also be an emergency ingress and egress via Love Spur. Concept plan for the proposed PUD provides for homes that front on a common open space with walking trails and landscaping throughout the development. The proposed layout is intended to foster a sense of community and provide for enhanced walkability throughout the development. This is the concept plan associated with the PUD proposal. So you can see here, as I mentioned, all of the streets would be private. Be two points of ingress egress off of Cunningham Road and an additional point of ingress and egress via Love Spur that would be gated with a Knox box for emergency access only. View of the subject property facing west from Cunningham Road. This is a view of the subject property facing north along Cunningham, facing south, and a view from Love Road facing south down Love Spur. This is the comprehensive plan, future land use map, so you can see here, it's all designated residential mix. Residential mix place type encourages most residential development types, including single-family duplexes and townhomes. Residential mix place type also encourages up to 25% non-residential and up to 95% residential uses. Property is also located within the controlled growth sector on the growth sector map. Sector includes areas of the city that have access to city infrastructure nearby. The proposed development within the controlled growth sector should be evaluated for adherence to the big ideas and recommendations of the comprehensive plan, particularly those related to housing and neighborhood options, and should improve Colleen's fiscal health and sustainability. Staff finds that the request is consistent with several of the big ideas of the comprehensive plan, including big idea number one, resource stewardship and fiscally responsible growth ensure a more prosperous community for the long haul. Big idea number five, which states that neighborhoods, not subdivisions, make great places for everyone. We also found that the request supports or furthers a number of the comprehensive plan recommendations, including making, using place types as, and complete neighborhoods as building blocks, improving the fiscal productivity of development, encouraging incremental evolution of neighborhoods, diversifying housing mix, including types and price points, and building complete neighborhoods. If approved, the applicant intends to pay fees in lieu of parkland dedication, which based on the anticipated 80 single-family units, parks fees for the proposed development would be roughly $96,000 in total. Storm sewer infrastructure is available to the property on the east side of Cunningham and consists of several storm sewer inlets of unknown type connected by runs of existing 18-inch reinforced concrete pipe. The capacity of the existing system will need to be evaluated prior to its use, and the property is in the Still House Hollow Lake watershed and located in Zone X. Again, this is an aerial of the property relative to the floodplain. We notified 102 surrounding property owners. Of those property owners notified, 56 reside outside the 200-foot notification boundary required by the state, but within the 400-foot notification boundary required by the council, and 14 live outside the city limits. We've received 21 written responses in opposition to this request. This map indicates the location of the property owners that are in opposition. Staff finds that the proposed PUD offers a pattern of residential development that is not currently available in Colleen, and if approved, the proposed PUD will provide a build-to-rent community, which will help fill the need for missing middle housing as identified in the comprehensive plan. The proposed concept plan contemplates homes that front on a common open space, which provides for increased walkability and an enhanced sense of community among its residents. Surrounding area includes a mix of residential uses, including single-family lots, large single-family lots, and undeveloped property. Staff finds that the proposed development pattern is consistent with the residential character of the surrounding properties. Staff also finds that the applicant's request is consistent with the recommendations of the 2040 comprehensive plan. So we are recommending approval of the request to rezone the property as presented, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended disapproval of the request by a vote of six to zero. In accordance with Chapter 31, approval of the request does require a three-fourth majority vote. Happy to answer any questions you have.
You attended the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And the city wants it and planning and zoning don't. Did y'all have this discussion after they voted and any way to table this item? I guess, no, I guess not. And tried to see, because it's very difficult, and I don't vote, and I don't, I cannot even imagine what the council's feeling at this time, when you have the planning and zoning saying one thing, and here we go, the city is saying we can do it. So I was just curious to, to anything that they could have stated that, from their reasons for voting it down, that it could be worked out prior to being brought to the council.
So what I will say is that typically, when there's a split vote on the Planning and Zoning Commission, if, if some are in favor and some are in opposition, we typically try and garner what the reasons were for the disparity. But in this case, it was a unanimous recommendation for disapproval. So what I gathered from the meeting was that it was based largely on the presence of citizens in opposition. And what I'll also say is that staff makes our recommendation before we know how many people are going to come and speak and support our opposition. So our recommendation is based on the comprehensive plan and the character of the surrounding area.
And I was going there. If we're basing ours on comprehensive plan, I guess, planning and zoning, it's not based on that, or...
It's my perception that it was, it was based on the presence of citizens in opposition, rather than staff's recommendation.
I just wanted some clarity on that. Thank you for that. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Mayor. You mentioned that they want to use an emergency exit on Love Spur. I've been on Love Spur, do they plan on...
Are you developing that?
So it's, it's currently not wide enough to be an emergency access easement. The fire code requires at least 20 feet. It's shy of that, so they'll have to improve it to be an all-weather surface at least 20 feet in width.
And that looks like it's going to go into their property owner's land, and so have they spoken to their property owner?
So, as I understand it, Love Spur is public right-of-way.
Right.
So they should be able to improve it. I don't know if they've spoken to the property owners out there or not.
So why is it going to have to go into that land, from what it looks like?
I was going to pull up the aerial for just a second. So you can see here, Love Spur comes all the way down here.
Yeah.
And is, is right-of-way, so they should be able to improve that surface to be at least 20 feet in width.
And for, educate me real quick, I think I forgot, oh, traffic or impact analysis, is that required for this as well?
No, sir, it's not.
And then you mentioned about the existing storm structure, there will, there potentially could be some more, some requirements for improvements to the stormwater and wastewater structure?
Yes, sir, that would be evaluated at the plating stage of the development.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Zager, would you like to say something? I noticed that you walked forward.
I'm just ready for any questions.
Yes, sir.
I think just to kind of piggyback off of Wallace there, any of the engineering design comes at a later date. This is just looking at the zoning. When the developer comes to the point coming to the plan, that's when the actual engineering reviews come into play. They will have to meet our drainage design manual. They don't have enough impact to the traffic based on our unit, so they won't have to do TIA, but we will be looking, you know, frontage improvements, anything that they have to do as associated to the development.
Councilmember Segura, then Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor. When, when people come up here and they speak against, you know, zoning for development, you know, when you come up here, one of the things that usually doesn't work is the first thing they say is, you know, my value is going to go down. And my response is always, well, are you going to sell your property? Never. Well, then you must want higher taxes, because property goes up, you pay more taxes. No, I don't want any taxes. So using, you know, just for those of you that are going to speak, using that my house is going to, my property is going to devalue is not a good justification. The other one is a lot of traffic, and we see that everywhere, you know, with growth, you're going to deal with a lot of traffic. It's just part of growth, and we're going to expand, so that's not a good one. But with all of that said, I did walk this property, and my concern is the water, the water runoff. And I sat with that young lady there at her house in her living room, and, you know, she explained to me how that road was developed, you know, how they developed that road on their own, her husband did it. And right now, you answered that Love, what was the name of that road?
Love Spur.
We're not even sure, you know, if it's in city or not.
Or it's in the city.
That's, that's the big concern, because I think this property, if I'm not mistaken, does it sit on a higher elevation than those properties, or is it on a lower elevation? It's on a higher elevation.
The subject property is.
Yeah, so even though it might not be in a flood zone, that's kind of my concern about this, because I walked that whole property, and I could see the damage that it's done down there, even on those other properties that were developed. So, you know, I kind of hesitate on approving something like that until we get more assurance and get that whole area, you know, fixed and, and work with the residents that live there.
So, Mr. Zager, I addressed that with you, and Councilmember Segura, he's going to answer that, and I don't, and you got a violet point that they need to take care of that. So, we talked about it, but I don't know. The floor is yours.
Okay, so real quickly, looking at the property, the proposed rezone, about a third of it flows to the west, you know, and two-thirds goes towards Cunningham. So there is amount of area that does, when water, you know, rain hits, there is runoff that goes to the west. It does happen to go to, you know, some of it will sheet flow over to Love Spur and towards the residents that you were speaking of right there at the bottom. As this developer, you know, gets into their development, if it is approved and they move forward, they will be responsible to know where that water's going. They cannot make anything worse. You know, there is water, if there's a way they're going to collect it. Part of the plan they showed is they were looking at putting a detention pond right in, you know, this, this area. They're also putting a detention pond in the front along Cunningham. I think if you want to look at about, right there is about the dividing line of where this flows this way, this flows that way. That developer is going to have to analyze that. They're going to have to analyze how much water is running off the property. They can't increase it, and they can't make it to where it's eroding or doing any additional erosion towards those properties. That's all be part of that in engineering review is we, when we get those plans come in, and to make sure that they're taking that in account, and they're, they're doing, you know, the necessary calculations and planning and engineering design, you know, then, you know, before that, we will not release anything for construction until they approve that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question about the southern road, the road on the south side of this development going east to west, is across from Fawn Drive. Is it planned to extend Fawn Drive into that development, or rather, the question is it to maintain that same?
I don't believe so. I think this is, this is all private development. They're looking at making it all internal, and there is no, no plans to extend Fawn at all.
I see, understood. I just want to point out that the engineer, as was suggested there, would be responsible for accounting for our proper drainage for such a development. So just to highlight a few things that you just stated, they cannot make the situation any worse. They would be required through calculations and what engineers do to find a way to collect that water. They would likely account for water through detention ponds. The developer will have to analyze the project, and they cannot allow additional erosion. Ultimately, the city will not release plans for construction until those things are met, so that's something that's important for folks to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. I do have a quick question for you. So the statement that was just made by Councilmember Boyd was that they have to go through the drainage plan. The plan cannot make it worse. Is there a possibility, one, that it could improve their situation? I mean, I know that we can't guarantee that, obviously, but is there a possibility under the circumstance?
Yeah, I would say yes, because, one, it's this wild, it sheet flows, and they're going to be, obviously, this developers, they go in, they're going to be collecting the water and dive right to a detention pond, so they can look at getting away some of that sheet flow that may be going towards Love Spur and getting it to that detention pond, and then eventually, like I say, that is all a drainage pathway, that is a wetland, or it's also, I mean, a floodplain, and so they're discharging into that. You know, that's the native drainage area for, you know, pattern for this whole area. That's the drainage path. All the water goes essentially to this spot and works its way towards Stagecoach. They're going to be working and mimicking what's going on out there now, but, you know, using the development and control it. So, long answer, but short answer is yes, they're, most likely are able to improve some of the areas.
And then the question was posed to me about who, just in general, of this overall process, okay? Who determines the fact that this is, this conversation that we're having about the drainage and the developers' plan of action, who determines that space, too, versus the order that it's, this is state regulation? Who determines that process and that flow?
So in regard to the floodplain, and that is really based on state law in regard to drainage flows, not being able to, diversion of drainage, you have to let the water flow where it's supposed to go. We look at our codes, I look at our standards. So engineering, when these plans come in, we get those permits, they get to submit them, we have to review and make sure they're ensuring they're complying with all those regulations, and make sure they've looked at them, calculated them, and, you know, then before that, you know, again, we will not release plans for construction until they've demonstrated that.
Thank you.
Sir, I've asked so many questions in reference to erosion and detention ponds and how the water flows, and some of all kinds of stuff. I got myself confused a little with who's responsible, bottom line. If it's, who's, you know, I've always made that statement about your land, you take care of it, and when it's our land, and we need to come out and we need to help take care of it, who's taking care of all of this? And also with that, would you speak more about the detention pond and how it helps?
So ultimately, it is the property owner that's responsible. The developer, they're the ones who are building it, they're doing the engineering calculations, it's their engineer that does the design, they're putting their stamp, they're putting their reputation on that. Maintenance in this regard would be the property owner that ultimately will be responsible. If this is one developer that's making a private development, it's all on them. So anything that may occur negatively in the future, it's really a civil action between the two property owners, but all liability lies on the developer and the property owner. In regard to the detention pond, what that does is it, when you develop property, you know, whether it's right now bare ground, trees, the certain amount of water hits the ground, and it makes its way towards those low areas, you know, water flows downhill, it goes fast, it goes slow, depending on what you got. Some may soak into the ground, but, you know, if it's areas where it's rained a lot, it may not soak at all, but it's going to go. It hits grass, it hits trees. The velocity changes depending on what it is, you know, the slope. When you develop an area, you're changing grades, you're putting asphalt, you're putting roofs, you're putting areas that are impervious. Water will not soak into a roof, it will not soak into a roadway, you know, especially around here. So that water moves faster. It may get to, from point A to point B faster, and, you know, the volume's not going to change, it's just the velocity, the time, the time it gets there. The detention ponds, what those do is they hold the water. So you're looking at what it's doing now, the time it gets from water to get from point A to point B, you know, it goes this way. Develop, it'll go faster, you know, compared to what's existing. Develop, they'll go faster, you know, compared to what's existing. The detention ponds hold it back. They hold that water, they hold it, and then slowly release it to where that time and the amount of water that, the volume that's going past it is going to be no greater than what it's doing today.
So, when we get these plans, we have to know what everybody's going to do. Are you going to put more foliage out there to help with erosion and with this flood plain? And when you buy land that's in a flood plain, this is explained to the owners of that flood plain. Are they aware of this?
Typically, when someone owns a flood plain, it's going to be on their deed, they're going to be, you know, they know about it, that they are within a flood plain. You know, the develop, the previous presentation, when we were talking about flood plains, that owner knows about it. That's shown on that property. If they go to buy it, they're going to get something that tells them, you've got these restrictions on your property, this is what it is. You know, if you're in a flood zone, you may have to buy flood insurance. That's the whole premise of a flood zone map, is whether you need to buy flood insurance or not. Yeah, so property owners are aware of it, and then what they can do to mitigate it, grasp, they could, you know, that, those, we call and consider best management practices as part of the drainage design, you know, where you can mitigate some of that stuff. You can, other than just detention, that's one item, there's a lot of other things that people, engineers can figure out of how to deal with that stormwater runoff.
So, when this happens, when we come with the developments, and when we start looking at all the good things that's going to occur, do we help those property owners? Do we, is there some kind of help that the city gives, or they're on their own? Do you sit and talk with them? You give them a map? You tell them about the detention ponds and the things that you will try to help? Or do you just say, hey, that's your land, you bought it, it's up to you, buddy?
So, typically, we try not to get involved in the private owners and private, private properties issues. There are some instances where, you know, if there's repetitive loss, and there's repetitive issues that are associated to, you know, house getting flooded, there's, it becomes more of a safety issue. It becomes more of a health and safety issue that we have to look at, you know, where there may be a home that's constantly getting flooded, and we look at other options where we may be able to assist through FEMA, through other grants, you know, where we can try to acquire those properties and turn them into a park.
And I like that. When I was asking all those questions, I'm sorry for cutting you off, because you said something that really sparked an interest. When you were telling me about the detention ponds, and when I was constantly calling you and trying to figure this out, and to see where things had to go, you mentioned the things that FEMA can offer. Can the owner, looking to FEMA programs to sell their land to FEMA, can they give it up? What if they don't want to sell it? What if they don't like, I know it's my time up.
Well, we actually had, well, we went through this a couple of years ago, but yes, there are programs in there that are federal assistance to affect the health and safety of the public, and it's typically what they call repetitive loss. Is your property in a flood zone? Is it going to be something that's existing, and it's getting flooded all the time, and you're getting damaged, and you're getting these repetitive insurance claims? FEMA has programs and grants for that. The city has done that in the past with some residential properties where they were always getting flooded. They used this program, got those grant dollars to buy that property, and then leveled the home, make it a park. You know, that's options we do, but it's something that we look for those assistance. There's requirements that has to either be in a flood zone, or else it's an area that gets flooded, and they have a lot of insurance claims, and they have submitted those claims. Those are all things that you have to do for those programs, but that's something, ultimately, we have to focus, and it's always around health and safety of the public.
But we'll make sure that the health and safety and the area is safe for all persons that will be, I don't care if they're developers, I don't care if they're owners, I don't care if they live in the middle of it. We will always ensure the safety of the area and what we're doing. Mr. Zagers, I thank you for taking the questions today and me calling, and woo wee.
Your time is up, thank you. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, what I'm understanding, Mr. Zager, is really the problem out there right now, from what we're hearing, is drainage. Have y'all, you guys went out there and looked at that whole drainage situation? Is it a serious problem out there right now?
By opinion, no, because that is, that's a natural drainage area, the course of the whole area. That's what nature built, that's where the water goes. There hasn't been development, there hasn't been anything to increase or cause any change. The only things that changes is Mother Nature. Weather patterns have changed, storm intensities have changed. You know, last year, we had, you know, we were in a drought condition, and then we had a big storm, and suddenly the lake raised 10 feet. Well, that's because there was a lot of water that hit the ground. You know, those are things that are occurring more frequently, and it's not just here, but it's across, you know, the nation and the world, and those are the things that are happening. But in this area, I mean, that's where the water goes. It's a drain, it's a flood plain, because that's where, historically, where water's always gone.
So, with this development, it should improve it?
It'll, it will not change anything. Their intent is they're not supposed to change anything coming from this property. The property owner is responsible for their property.
And we are requiring a certain amount of detention ponds?
Correct.
Correct. And it's just two?
Depends on, this is what the developer show on their site plan. They're going to be having to do those calculations, so, oh, thanks. Ultimately, it'll be their design. You know, we're not into that phase of what they're showing here, the big map. Yeah, they're showing one pond here, and they're showing one pond there based on their initial site plan, but ultimately, it's what we see when they submit those engineered plans.
Because we know, given the amount of rain, if we have a storm that comes and it's really pouring down, those detention ponds, those ponds can overflow.
They can, but when their size and our regulations require them to be holding the amount of water for what they consider a 100-year storm, that is a storm that has 1% chance of occurring in 100 years, or 26% in 30 years.
And the reason why I say that is because, and I know my time just brought up, is that we've had, I've had that experience over in another area, over District 2, that the detention ponds overflow during, when it's pouring down rain, continuous rain.
They have an overflow, so they have, typically, it's a weir. And a lot of that's one of the main, it's like a little dam at the end of the pond. So, it's sized to, as the water, the pond fills up, you know, again, we're looking at those flows that are releasing, the flows that are leaving the pond, and, you know, the bigger the storm, the bigger the flows, and so they're going to mimic that pond to match what's out there today. So, that weir, yeah, it'll overflow, but that's the overflow elevation based on what the engineer calculated for that flow rate to leave that pond. So, in a big storm event, when it fills up, they're still looking at how much water is being released.
Thank you so much, sir.
So, Mr. Zagers, my question to you, we know there's a concern over there. We also know that when the development happened, it's the responsibility of the developer to ensure that it does not become worse. And one of the things that Councilwoman Cobb, you spoke to her about, once the development is complete, the part I think was missing is the city will follow the step-by-step to ensure that they build it to the standards of our ordinance to not make that area worse than what it already is. Correct?
Correct. So, once a plan is released for construction, engineering department does go out there, they do the inspections. We make sure that what's being built is what was designed and what was on the plans. Subsequently, they also have what we call is a maintenance agreement. As a requirement before they can occupy or build any houses or any residential, they, the owner enters into an agreement that says that they're going to maintain these stormwater facilities, and then the city also has the right to come in and inspect it. So, our stormwater group does inspect these things throughout the entire city. We inspect it once a year. So, we're going to inspect all these ponds, we're going to make sure they're being maintained. They're going to make sure those outflows are, you know, the falls, the dams, the pipes are all being cleaned, maintained, and still functional. So, that is something we do, perform every year. Part of the agreement is also, if they don't maintain it, you know, we notify, we, you know, we notify the owner, they have a responsibility to maintain it, and if we don't, and we end up having to use city crews to go out there and then maintain, we will then obviously charge that to the property owner. But ultimately, it is the property owner's responsibility to take care of those.
Okay. Well, thank you, there are no more questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 25013, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mickey Salie. Case number Z 2505, to rezone approximately .063 acres being part of Lot 12, Block 10, out of the Clean Original Addition from B5 Business District to HOD Historic Overlay District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol Sales District, with HOD Historic Overlay District. The subject property is locally addressed as 321 North Gray Street, Clean, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Messer.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is a request to rezone the property at 32, 321 North Gray, from B5 to BC1, which is the General Business and Alcohol Sales District. Property is located within the Historic Overlay District, and therefore, there is a zoning overlay of HOD. Per Chapter 31 of our Code of Ordinances, a restaurant engaged in the on-premise sale and consumption of alcohol may not obtain more than 50% of its gross receipts from the on-premise sale of alcoholic beverages during any consecutive 12-month period. If approved, the applicant plans to use the property as a restaurant and bar. On weekdays, the business will operate mainly as a restaurant, offering lunch and dinner with a full menu, and on weekends, it will serve a limited food menu and provide a nightlife experience from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, featuring music and drink service. So, although the proposed business will have both a restaurant and bar component, changing the underlying zoning of the property from B5 to BC1 will provide the applicant with more flexibility in his business model. The red star indicates the location of the subject property. This is an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's on the southwest corner of North Gray and East Avenue C. This is a view of the front of the property, facing west from North Gray Street. This is a view of the property facing south down North Gray. This is a view of the property across the street, and view of the surrounding property facing north. The subject property is located within the infill and enhance area on the growth sector map and is designated urban village on the future lane use map. The request does support the comprehensive plan recommendations, including encouraging incremental evolution of neighborhoods, prioritizing infill and redevelopment, revitalization in North Clean, and embracing the small and incremental approach to adding small-scale spaces. We notified 83 surrounding property owners regarding this request, and we've received no written responses, either in support or opposition. This is the notification boundary. Staff finds that the request is compatible with the character of the area and consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan envisions a vibrant downtown as the cultural and economic hub of the community, and staff is of the determination that approval of this request will have a positive impact on the surrounding properties, and we are therefore recommending approval of the request as presented. Planning and zoning commission also recommended approval unanimously. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
There are no questions, thank you. Counsel, we're moving forward. If you need to take breaks, take breaks in between. We're now going into our citizen comments. On the agenda item, citizens, you have four minutes to speak. Counsel, you have one minute time allotted for a city council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. As I stated before, public hearing items, you can sign up to speak on those items during public hearing, but citizen comments, there are no public hearing items. With that being said, Michael Forino, you have four minutes. Michael. Ms. Brown, please do not disrupt the meeting by yelling out. That's your first warning. Michael Forino. Next person, Sean Price. Sean Price. Good afternoon, Mr. Price, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon. Well, so, city council, I rise today for several queries. For RS 25041, underneath this packet, I'm just wondering why we have so much division, right? Why do we have, why do we have a chamber of commerce for every different race and ethnicity in this town? I don't know why, we just don't have one with everybody in it and everybody equally represented, but we got to get so nitpicky that we got to just pick and make everybody extra special. I don't know what we're doing and why we were, why we're, you know, I don't want to use segregating, but it's, this looks like that we're dividing ourselves unnecessarily. And I understand why we're, why we're not just having one group. Under RS 25044, what's the end date for Phase 1? I know we got these little statements, but what's the actual end date? Date and time, when it's going to be completed? Whether it's Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, there are always exceptions to any rule, this is understood, but what's the expected end date? How long does it take to build the damn road? We already, we already know that it takes so many days to make a road, so why are we, as a city, not requiring that in our contracts? Because it just, it's not, I don't see it there. And then under OR 25006, you just added $2,500 to my tax base for my house. And what I understand, that Ms. Kegel said that we had a AAA rating, and that the 100, or $92 million that were projected to spend, right? We don't want to go over the $92 million range to affect our credit rating. Well, from what I understand, and I'm probably going to be told that, oh, you're mistaken what you heard, right? I thought we already had a AAA rating, but this makes us a double-A rating, right? And it adds, it adds quite a stiff penalty to me to get this. I didn't know that we were adding to what we were already spending. So, I'm in opposition to any of those things that we want to build and add, because you're just pricing me out of my house. You're telling me, sorry, don't want you here, unless if you cough up, you know, $5,700 a year on your house. Because you just raised, the tax priser just raised the estimated value of my house, so he could charge me more, so y'all can borrow more to spend more. Have a nice day.
Ms. Beth Wilson, you have four minutes. Beth Wilson. Good evening, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for letting me speak today, because a lot of what y'all are bringing up in your questions and answers is very dear to my heart. The wastewater and water plan does not include upgrades to the entire Donut Hole that I live in. I have provided pictures for y'all to see what I endured last May 16th, and these are known areas that are problems. There is no plan for the city to pay for the sewer services, which you've already discussed, without charging us, even though it is part of the promise the city made to us in our 15-year contract. That's upsetting to me, should be to you. You were stewards to us, but you have to listen to us, and we have to come together and make a plan that's right for everybody, and I don't see that happening. Why build new roads before fixing the problems of the old ones, which y'all addressed? And it's, I'm glad to see that it's coming, that it wasn't fast enough. It's up to y'all to provide the roads, we have to maintain them, I get that, but it also tears up our vehicles, which is now left as our expense to take care of, even though we didn't come together to get them fixed in a more timely manner. So, again, my taxes will pay for these bonds, too, I hope. After drainage improvement, or drainage improvements to the Donut Hole, included in the revenue bonds for the Donut Hole, you want to keep building and then not take care of the people that have... Donut Hole, you want to keep building and then not take care of the people that have, who have been paying taxes and fees for years. And when I heard that $50,000 to $70,000 comment a while ago, my blood drained from my body. Because I've been paying you taxes now since 2008, let me tell you what I've gotten. As my daughter puts it, you went to Dollar General and you bought me a light post for the center of my cul-de-sac, and it is a leaning tower of pizza. We are in the United States, we are not in France. Come on, you gotta do better than what you've done. Thank you.
Sue, oh, you're welcome, ma'am. Sue Hallmark. Good evening, ma'am, you have four minutes. Is there any way we could take a mic?
She wants to stand. She has made it very clear that she wants to stand for you all.
Oh, no, I know she had to stand, but she could have just stood up from her seat.
She wanted to be here. This is what she has requested.
May my daughter stay here with me?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sue Hallmark, and I live at 165 Love Spur. First of all, I am not against progress in the city. My husband, W. Hallmark, also known as Hallmark Construction and Associates, developed subdivisions and neighborhoods and built houses in Colleen and in the ETA from 1954 until his death in 2015 at age 88. I am against the zoning of this property. All houses on the south side of Love Road were all on two acres or more, which he built, also two houses on the north side of Love Road with more property than that. We bought this land in '74 when it was county. Love Road was gravel and Love Spur was dirt. And if I talk of something out of turn, I'm sorry, I've never done this before. All these houses are on septic tanks and have been charged wastewater fee with our water bill since being annexed. I'm also concerned about the wildlife in this area. We have the privilege of observing deer, fox, coyotes, road runners, wild turkey, red-tailed hawks, golden eagles on our property, and they run across the backyard daily. Please do not allow this zoning to happen. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for coming and having the courage to speak. Thank you. Ms. Heather Magnili, you have four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I'm here to talk about the new wastewater drainage. I'm having a really hard time seeing the fact that there's a drainage plan put in place when there's not been a FEMA flood zone map put in since 2008. Mr. Zager himself says it's a 100-year floodplain. If you pull up that map of what you have listed as a 100-year floodplain from 2008 is a fraction of what is actually flooding. So you are using outdated information and not the proper resources when creating a master plan that you want to execute. Mr. Zager himself said that Gilbert Estates Drainage was done wrong. I have him on record stating it. This drainage was brought to the city council staff and committees on numerous occasions. Let's talk about Brookside, part of Gilbert Estates. It's nowhere on the drainage plan. On February 7th of 2019, I called the city about the drainage issues from the clearing of the land of Gilbert Estates was causing. They sent out an environmental city employee by the name of Alvarez, who asked if I would consider granting easement to help with the drainage issues he saw. I never heard back from him nor the city again on this matter. On January 6th of 2021, I sent videos to the staff and council of the poor drainage and erosion that the drainage from Gilbert Estates was causing my residents and the properties surrounding. On the 12th of January 2021, Ms. Cobb spoke in opposition of the development of this area as a citizen of the Donut Hole because she saw what it caused the area and the residents. On the weeks before August 9th of 2022, the issues of drainage was brought back to the attention when the approval of Thousand Oaks was brought to the council. The Thousand Oaks development has been on the engineering reports stating from Q1 of 2024 that they are waiting on approval for access to the residents for an environmental impact study about the drainage. My property's in that box, so is Mr. Overby, so is Mr. Price. Since Q1 of 2024, yet we've never gotten any environmental access requests. How are you putting together a drainage report for the city when you are not collecting the right data? The city is doing it on assumptions and rough estimates. The assumptions that Mr. Boyd has stated he assumes during council meetings of what things look like, the rough estimates that Mr. Zager has sent to me in emails. This land of a 100-year flood zone is completely outdated and it is malice that you guys are causing to the residents. This is not fair. This has been an ongoing problem. Are we part of the five-year, 10-year, or 25-year plan that Mr. Zager talked about? I have videos on January 6th with Onion Road overflowing of water that has all been sent to you, but yet Onion Road is not to be done unless there's life or death. Mr. Kegel himself said Onion Road's over milling was a mistake, but yet how much money did the city spend on the over milling of a mistake even though a CIP and bond was promised to the pre-annexation agreement for drainage and roads? All of these things, are we on a five, 10, 25-year plan? Because I'm living on a 100-year plan.
Your time is up. Mr. Kegel.
The plan that was presented tonight by Mr. Zager's and by Freeza Nichols was for water and sewer. It had nothing to do with drainage. That's why it wasn't addressed. It's for water and sewer.
Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
Good evening.
So I can tell by the questions tonight that everybody read their entire package.
No, really, it's April Fool's, you didn't, because if you did, you would ask for the contract and resolution for Stagecoach R, unless you all have it and the public don't. So let's talk about this for a second, since there were some questions about JHL. JHL Inc. is a subcontractor who specializes in natural stone veneer installation. They were a sub for a project on East Legends Way and on West Avenue D, both in Colleen. The certificate of interested parties says JHL is just a DBA for Entcon Incorporated. Entcon Incorporated is a staffing and recruitment firm. Who is the GC for this project? Are we going to trust this to an unknown entity? If it's Scott's Commercial Construction, as the signature on the certificate of interested parties indicates, their GC license expired on February 15th of 2025, and all of their projects were only building remodels. So now we've got that out of the way. Water and wastewater should be going into areas where infill is happening also, not just new projected growth. The sewers should be there anyway, and existing properties should be granted tie-ins rather than being forced to pay for it. Funding this used to be a priority for the city councils. We had it in our CIP every year. We had it in our CIPs in 2021. We're going to pay for a new Mohawk Road that will be developed, but isn't there yet. So where is the justification? If you can't do CIPs in the Donut Hole because of lack of development, then why are we paying bond money, debt money, for CIP to go into an area that conveniently is going to help increase property value for commercial land, but isn't there yet? If we're prioritizing areas that are developing, that are growing, and you're saying there are no plans for development, you're waiting for a developer to come in, then make the developer pay for the road that they're going to need. That's the way this is supposed to work. This would be the same way as on the west side of Bunny Trail, where we're forcing the developer to build and pay for the extension of Mohawk Drive over there. And maybe we should lower the ADT requirement for the TIA, because it seems like we have a lot of traffic issues that aren't going to meet that requirement. My question was never answered about how Stone Tree will support its own bond when their total projected positive revenue would barely cover the principal of the bond, and that was when we had a projected lower interest rate than what we ended up with. And why are we talking about debt on top of debt on top of debt? Where are we exactly using all these impact fees that we've been collecting? If we can't afford the growth, we shouldn't be approving new developments to those areas, especially when that development is in control growth areas. Our interest rates are already came in higher than expected, and keep going, we're going to reduce our credit rating even further. Where is the report for us to review? We are all essentially a good or fair rating instead of excellent, which would be A+, or AAA, and when we have to issue debt for everything and still can't take care of our existing properties, that is, in layman's terms, living outside of our means. Poor decisions are driving these needs because we're not looking forward, because we're looking at taking care of friends, because we're looking at taking care of names. I find it funny that Scott Koster is suddenly on KEDC when he hasn't really been involved in the city in years.
Thank you. Stefan Patterson? Did I pronounce your name right? Stefan Steven? Stefan Patterson? Oh, thank you for that. Okay, moving on. Nelson Sandiaga? Nelson Sandi... Good evening, sir. You have four minutes. Thank you. Santero? Santiago, right? Okay, got it. Sorry about that, sir. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon. I would like to address, make a comment about the Colleen Economic Development Corporation. Congratulations on what just happened. I would like to ask the city council to increase the members of the board and to include participation for other groups from the community. I believe that we should integrate Hispanic and other groups from the community. I believe when we work together, we can get more done, and that is my comment. I understand that this might create issue thinking that we just went, it's not about the Chamber of Commerce, it's about if we work together, we can get further and do more for this area. That's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Josie McKinney? Ms. Josie McKinney? No, Ms. Josie McKinney. Mr. James Seals? Mr. James Seals? Good evening, sir, you have four minutes. And if you signed for citizen comments and I didn't call your name, please come and tell Madam Secretary, because it's a lot, and I want to make sure if you signed up for it, please, if I overlooked you, please talk to the Madam Secretary. Sir, I apologize for that. Good evening, as always, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. The 2020 Water and Wastewater Master Plan capital improvement projects included a line item for $5 million for the septic tank elimination in the short-term period, an additional $5 million for the intermediate, and $10 million for the long-term. The staff report from this agenda states 63% of the 2019 to 2024 CIP projects have been constructed, are under construction, or being designed. 100% of the original $22 million in the 2020 Water and Wastewater Bond has been spent or is allocated for projects under construction or design. Were all or any of the short-term funds, the $5 million from the 2020 CIPs, used for septic tank elimination? I ask because the Phase 2 MS4 Annual Report Form dated 2023, located on the city website and also provided to TCEQ, states the following on Page 4 for ID 8, which is reduced failing septic systems. Yes, the city previously used septic tank elimination program step to determine the number of new sewer tie-ins would reduce illicit discharges to the system. At this time, all septic systems within the city have been tied into the city's sanitary system. On Page 15, it states, goal met. The city has successfully removed all septic systems within the city limits. All properties are tied into the city's sanitary sewer. Therefore, zero steps, investigations, or priority areas were needed when this MCM is concerned. I'll repeat, this form was submitted to TCEQ in 2023, 2024, and it states, goal met. The city has successfully removed all septic systems within the city limits. Furthermore, I noticed in the 2024 Water and Wastewater Plan, there are $0 now allocated for step. So has the city removed all septic systems within the city limits as it reported to TCEQ? I don't think they have. Furthermore, why doesn't the city ever extend wastewater services to surrounding properties for new developments? For example, Gilbert Estates. There's an adjoining property, literally attached to Gilbert Estates. That one property is still on septic, while all his neighbors are tied into the sewer system. In terms of infrastructure, this is the ongoing confusion in the Donut Hole. Did you know, since 2008, since the annexation, there's only been five officially logged drainage-related work requests or work orders on Llewellyn, Featherline, Onion, and Cunningham? Since 2008, five. That's according to a public records request that I submitted. There's been no improvements in this area since it's been annexed. You talk about Onion Road, the wastewater project. You stated it wasn't a need. There were three CIPs identified in that annexation plan for Onion Road. They've been a need since it's been annexed. It's been a need since you've developed other surrounding properties in the area. Yeah, it's a flood zone, right, in these areas? That doesn't mean the city has the right to flood it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seals. Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Fornino was not in the chambers when I called his name. I'm asking you, is it okay for me to call him up, since he was not in the chambers, but he was outside to speak? Mr. Fornino, good evening, you have four minutes.
Thank you. While I was taking advantage of the water and sewer in the building. The sudden flurry of request items from Councilman Boyd is patently absurd. It's just a last-minute jazz. It's just a last-minute jazz funeral on an otherwise failed and at best unremarkable tenure on this council. You quit. Why try to score points now? You've got three weeks to the election. Pardon me, please pause my time, Madam Secretary. Okay, this gentleman behind me saying shut up. Would you please deal with him, Madam Mayor? You know exactly who I'm talking to.
Madam Secretary, could you hear anybody say shut up?
Madam Mayor, I'm not tracking what's going on. I'm taking notes.
I haven't heard anything.
It was Mr. Jones again. I don't even have to turn around. There's nothing wrong with my hearing.
Madam Secretary, start the clock, please. Mr. Jones, do not interrupt him if you did that, please.
For the record, this is not the first time I've dealt with this. He wants to rename a road after a man who didn't even live on the road he wants to be renamed after. He was only known for waving at people. When he died last summer, he was interred in the state of Georgia, not in Killeen, not even in the state of Texas. Did you know that? It's another clear demonstration that you do not know your district or its people. He actually lived closer to you, Mr. Boyd, on Reach Creek Road. He was your neighbor practically. This gesture to dress up Bunny Trail is simply to distract from the failure of a project and frustration to those who live near it. Parks funding, Mr. Boyd once again demonstrates his fetish for parks. We can't maintain what we have, but he wants to build more. No matter what problem the city has, let's build a park, asked the residents at his disastrous town hall at Haynes Elementary. Residents didn't want parks. When Mr. Boyd was confronted by actual issues facing that neighborhood, he declined to discuss them and call the police, who responded within minutes. Ironically, lack of policing in response was one of the residents' concerns. Ten years ago, ten, I came before this council raising issues with code enforcement. They lack personnel to maintain even the basics of a clean and presentable city. And on his way out, this is suddenly a concern and an original idea from you, Mr. Boyd? No. You're not taking credit for that. Let's discuss ARPA and the like. Overall, abject failure. The Comedy Club, total disaster. No accountability, no transparency. And the only one who benefited in the end was Mr. Segarra. Before he or any of you danced on semantics, he and his company was involved in the sale after advocating for the deal to begin with. And you made money. Well done. Of course, you will continue to deny any graft or conflict of interest despite the situation staring all of us in the face. Kinetic images, absolute graft. Another one with close personal ties to our mayor, a business owner who's bragged online in videos about how many grants she received, but not much mention of how much business she actually did. Let's be honest. Her priorer was paid to pretend she had a business for years at taxpayer expense. Then, due to the genius of our city staff, another detail missed, and she was allowed to use the building that she did not own to refinance it at twice its value, only to default predictably. Now, as the scam falls apart, the city doesn't even get the building back, the bank does. I'm speaking facts here. Once again, we can dance on the semantics. Mr. Segarra made money on the Comedy Club. Can't deny it. Whether it was his company, him personally, you made money. Kinetic images. I've been calling, calling on that one for years. Oh, no, there's no trouble. There's no trouble. Now, we're not even going to get the building back. Between the Comedy Club and this, any money we recruit has to go right back to the federal government. Very well done on taxpayer expenditures.
Thank you. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make the point that that is strictly opinions, not much allegations that are not true. They carry no value, no weight to me. They have no concern for me. Not concerned about any of those, including this sham recall that's coming up. But I did want to mention the gentleman who were proposing the name change for Bunny Trail for. He's a very well-known person in the community, very well-known, and I would, I'd be careful to speak negatively about him because a lot of people support him. The other thing I was going to mention is that regarding code enforcement, that comes from citizen concern, and I've always been cautious to make sure those very significant issues have an opportunity for conversation, and so looking forward to that. Yeah, just, I just remain professional despite all the disparaging comments and stuff. That's all I got. Too tired to go back and forth over the foolishness that comes out of his mouth all the time. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam. In the spirit of civil discourse, I'd just like to remind folks to not automatically assume there's always something nefarious going on. So while let's, regarding the issue regarding our flooding and the drainage at a particular, at the particular area we spoke about. Now, our citizens, it's come up multiple times, if it's relevant or not. So my question is, the constituent mentioned since 2008, there's been ongoing confusion. However, I do recall where our city staff has addressed on numerous times about the CIP contract, what it meant, when it expired, how that worked. My question is, what else can we do to bring some clarity to the constituents in that particular area to help give them peace of mind and clarity regarding that CIP and understanding of that particular agreement that is or is not expired at this time?
Mr. Kager, and Mr. Zager, could you please come in also? Mr. Kager, you can answer her that question because I have one for Mr. Zager.
I'll try. I don't know because we had a whole council agenda items, been a lot of time in here going over that contract in detail, and I don't know what else we can do. We could do it again.
I will be willing to meet with some of the constituents and just kind of get some feedback to see if there's a better way that we can figure out how to gain some clarity just because it has come up year after year. So thank you for that. Sorry, appreciate that. Also, regarding...
Is that in District Three?
I believe, yes.
Is Councilwoman Cobb District?
Obviously, I'm not going to step on your toes, Ms. Cobb, but if you are, I mean, obviously, our constituency has a question regarding that CIP. I think that it would be...
I think she's been working with them.
Has she? Okay, well, if you have, that's wonderful.
She has been working diligently with them.
I'll yield my time first to Ms. Cobb, and then I'll continue. Thank you.
I am proud of District Three. I am proud of the constituents. I'm proud of the concerns that they have for their district. My job is to ensure that everyone is treated fair, just, and I'm honest in reference to it. And as we work towards that, and we continue to work towards that, then our answers will be clear. And that was the one thing with Mr. Zager's, and I know Mr. Zager's is probably so tired of me, calling him constantly, asking him questions that he probably answered the day before. But to ensure understanding for all, what we sometimes forget, it's not only P and Z, not only our council members, not only persons who serve on some of the boards in this city, we are all volunteers. I'm proud to be a volunteer. Yeah, we, some of us receive staffing, yes, they work, but remember, these boards consist of volunteers who study and try and get it right. But our staff...
Thank you, Councilwoman.
They're experts.
Just to that point, Councilwoman Cobb, thank you so much for that clarity. And then regarding the Comedy Club in the downtown area and the businesses, I just wanted to make sure that we went on the record to understand... I'll yield my time.
Yeah, but Madam Secretary, could you start the clock again? What happened, she yielded her time, which took her over her time. Oh, no, she yielded her time to you. So that was her time. She used her time up. So, Councilwoman Cobb, yield your time to Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, leave me a minute, though.
No, you only give one, and you used up hers. Are you going to yield your time to her? If not, we got to move forward.
I'm going to yield my time to Mayor Protem, yes.
Mayor Protem.
I will be super quick there, Madam. Thank you. Just to know that we put provisions in place to protect those businesses, understanding that if we had that investment, that we knew that businesses succeed, some struggle, some fail, and that we would put provisions in place to be able to recoup those funds. Thank you. I'll yield back to Councilwoman Cobb.
Fifty seconds, Councilwoman.
Cobb?
I just want to say that every council meeting and every project and everything that we do, we do it with the hopes of making our city better. Maybe we don't do it the way that some of you may want to see it done, but we do it with effort, with honesty, and with pride. I tell you what, there's not a better staff or a better council that you can find in any city than the one that you have in the city of Killeen. To see Mr. Zager's and councilmen and other people on the staff go out when I say, well, you know what? You all go out, go look at it, see what's going on. I need your opinion. You've got people who are working hard. When you're sleeping, they're working. They're working on what you're seeing. When I saw those pictures and when we see the things that we see, if you think that this city staff or this council will not work, then you're absolutely wrong.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So what we have right here, and Mr. Zager, where's Mr. Zager's? Okay, Mr. Z, come a while in this conversation. First of all, the donut hole was put in place prior to, for the sake of those that don't know, prior to us even becoming councilmembers, way before us. The issues and concerns that's been going over there has been every council prior to me, and I came in 2017. So this has been an ongoing thing. I don't want us to give false hope when I think staff has made it clear what it's going to take in order to get that line laid. That's the reality. If it's not development, it's not going to happen. And having staff constantly meet when we already just heard from staff with the answer, more development, even some of the residents have acknowledged that. So let's just be upfront. Let's get that out the way. Second of all, I got some concerns. I heard a citizen, I'm not accusing, I'm just asking, that we presented in 2023 and 2024 the septic system to TCEQ, TCQE, that we, all of our septic systems was tied into the sewer line. Do you know anything about this report?
I believe that is part of our stormwater MS4 reporting. I'm going to have to take a look at that to see the actual verbiage. I know at one point it was referred to the septic program we had years ago...
I remember.
...where we completed that task. I don't believe the intent was to say that all septic systems in the city have been, you know, connected to the sewer because we know that's not the case. But I will have to, I'll have to look at that and have to look at, see what the report is actually saying. But that wasn't the intent to say all septic, just usually all the ones that are a problem.
Well, that has gone on record, it's on video, and I need that to be cleared up like ASAP.
I will get back when I'm ready, wanting to find out what that is.
My other concern, and Mr. Seals, I can honestly give him credit, he's going to do research, and that's what I love, that's one of his gifts now. The other thing he stated that there are, which is true, the three CIP projects that's over there, and I know where he's trying, where he's going, and if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. If we have major CIP projects over there, then wouldn't that be considered development in that area to lay the pipes over there?
So right now, there's, in our plans, there's the wastewater project that we know about that's on the wastewater plan. We knew about Featherline as being a roadway project, as being in that area. Stagecoach was another one. So as regards to the capital projects, the big ones, the big roadway widens, new water lines, you know, there's been a few of them. It's just a matter of, do they get selected? They're on the plans, they're on the transportation plan, they're on the drainage plan, their master plan, the wastewater master plan. It comes to the point where is it a priority? What triggers the need for those projects to move forward from the plan into design and construction?
Okay. So thank you, and I just wanted you to explain, thank you, sir. I just wanted you to explain the second part, but the first part, we really, the council need to answer, and the public need to answer on that one.
Yes, I definitely need to look at that as well.
Because if there was a mishap on our part, or if we reported it correctly, it needs to be known.
That is correct.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you. With that being said, consent agenda, that's, oh, Mr. Kager would like to clarify some things, and we're going straight into voting and going in. We got a closed-door meeting. No, we have an instant public hearing. This is some comments. Mr. Kager?
Yeah, and I did hear a couple of things as well. Ms. Hallmark said she's being charged a wastewater fee. If that's the case, we owe her some money. I hope, I hope she meant the drainage, but we'll check on that and see because if she's not connected to sewer, she should not be paying a sewer bill. The other thing, the question about the contract on Stagecoach, you heard Mr. Zager say that was being developed. But also, we actually had a lower interest rate on the bonds. If you will, the presentation showed a 4.5% interest rate, and our true interest cost was 4.05%. It gets a little complicated. I understand the confusion because we were going to borrow $38.8 million, but the way it worked out, they gave us $1,009,000, we only ended up borrowing $37.465 million, and then you average all that out, and the interest cost that we're paying is 4.05%. So it's actually quite a bit lower than we projected.
Thank you, Mr. Kager, for that explanation. And counsel, that's our responsibility. If there's something we hear and there's a misunderstanding, if we're right, we're right, but if we're wrong, we need to fix it and get the clarification. That's our job. We don't want to mislead anyone. So with that being said, Madam Secretary, consent agenda. Counsel, you have three times to speak for three minutes. Madam Secretary.
RS 25039, RS 25040, RS 25041, RS 25042, RS 25043, RS 25044, RS 25045, and RS 25046.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, Councilmember Board?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of RS-25-041 and RS-25-042.
Could you repeat that?
Sure, let me slow down. I make a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of RS-25-041 and RS-25-042.
42. Thank you. Can I get a second to the motion? Please click to make the second. Councilmember Adams.
A second.
Thank you, counsel. We got a lot more to go on this agenda, and we got a lot more in that public hearing, a lot of people speaking, and we got to go behind closed doors. So we got to stay focused so we can move this meeting forward. All in favor, yes. Councilwoman Cobb. Motion carries. Madam Secretary, six to zero. Madam Secretary, when you're ready. Counsel, RS 25-041, RS-25-042. Our city attorney have gone over both of those items. Did you need her to say anything else before we go into discussion? All right, Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We are RS-25-041. These two items, counsel, you will have to vote on them separate. Councilmember Board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During a previous meeting, the city council unanimously determined to exercise its authority to increase the number of directors for the Killeen Economic Development Corporation from nine to 10. Since that meeting, members of our community have expressed reasonable concerns relating to a perceived conflict of interest, the lack of representation concerning other chambers, which we recently heard in citizen comments, and the potential distraction from the corporation's core mission. While it may appear these concerns reflect a desire to maintain the status quo, I interpret them as a charge to ensure KEDC remains in alignment with this mission and progress goals. At this juncture, I'm asking the city council to reconsider the initiative, which I believe is the most appropriate at this time. Responsively, I make a motion to disapprove RS-25-041.
Approve RS-25-041. Is there a second? Councilmember Solomon.
A second.
There's a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Councilwoman Cobb, did you vote, please? Motion carries five to one. Councilmember Board, Madam Secretary, we are now moving to RS-25-042. Councilmember Board? We already voted on RS-041. Now we have to vote on RS-25-04. The city attorney have gone through the slides on this. Do we need to go back through it? All right, can I get a motion or a discussion or whatever you want to do? We got to move.
I make a motion, well, I need to amend this. I should be able to just make a motion if I'm not mistaken. I make a motion to approve RS-25-042, appointing Scott Cosper to KEDC as a Killeen Chamber of Commerce representative with the removal of Rodney Russell as the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce representative. This has to be done sub... This has to be done subsequently to the previous motion.
Is that a good motion, Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Russell doesn't need to be removed because he hasn't been appointed ever, so the motion is fine, just appointing the one chamber representative.
Understood, and thank you for that correction. Do I need to restate it?
Yes, I do.
Sure. Make a motion to approve RS-25-042, appointing Scott Cosper to KEDC as a Colleen Chamber of Commerce representative.
Mayor Protem?
I'm going to second that, but I also have a point of question, clarity, please.
The floor is yours. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you. There was a question by a constituent about expanding, and we had talked about this before, about ex officio members. Would that be just an agenda item for future, if we decided that we wanted to bring this back for conversation?
I mean, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That was, that shouldn't have been discussed because that's not the agenda item. Is voting on Scott Cosper, is a yes or a no? That's the only thing we can talk about. You either want him or you don't. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? You voting to put on Scott Cosper to be on KEDC, is yes or no? I know that threw you off what she said, but the one we talking about, to be clear, RS-25-042 is to appoint Scott Cosper to serve on the KEDC. That's it. That's it.
Madam Mayor, can I just add some clarity so the public is aware? The Chamber of Commerce has an existing seat on KEDC, so it's not as if we're creating another seat for another person. There's an existing seat for someone resigned, and we are required to appoint someone in that position.
Thank you for that, and that's the clarity we need. For Mr. Scott Cosper, thank you, that should have been said upfront. It's a seat that was already empty on KEDC, somebody stepped down, and that seat had to be filled. And Councilmember Board made a motion for that particular seat that was already vacant on KEDC for Mr. Scott Cosper to fill. Mayor Protem seconded. So all in favor, yes, all opposed, no? I just have a question, but I know I can't ask the question right now. It is on Scott Cosper. If he's leaving, what does that mean?
We don't know his personal life.
Okay.
She said if he's leaving, where we going?
One is, that's how we get off of agenda as council. We have to stay on the agenda. You either vote yes or no, because there's some confusion still. So if you don't want to vote, you can abstain. So all in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Motion carries six to zero. All right, council, we getting back on track. Ordinances. Thank you, Councilmember Board and Councilmember Mayor Protem. Mrs. Tingley, she went through OR-25-006. Madam Secretary.
OR-25006, consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2025, for capital projects. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Colleen, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2025, levying an ad valorem tax and pledging certain surplus revenues in support of the certificates. Approving an official statement, a paying agent, registrar, agreement, and other agreements relating to the sale and issuance of the certificates, and ordaining other matters relating to the issuance of the certificates."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion to approve OR-25-006, unless you want Ms. Tangley to go back through the slides? Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 25-006.
Councilmember Board?
Second.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. Public hearing, yes, ma'am, continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. PH-25011, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Quintero Engineering LLC on behalf of Nozad Realty LLC, Flume 2501, to amend the future land use map, Flume, designation for approximately .59 acres out of the John Essery survey, abstract number 296, from floodplain to neighborhood commercial. The subject property is locally addressed as 3019 Florence Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan's future land use map by changing the designation of approximately .59 acres being out of the John Essery survey, abstract number 296, from a floodplain designation to a neighborhood commercial designation, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, um, excuse me. Mrs. Mesher, she went through the slides, would you like for her to go back through the presentation? Okay, is the applicant here? The applicant like to speak. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to come up here and ask, here if you have any questions. There was some good questions earlier during a workshop that I just kind of wanted to point out. Somebody, I guess somebody had asked about the floodplain. As far as, as far as our preliminary investigations, our subject tract that we're looking to develop is outside of the 100-year floodplain. That, on that map, there shows a blue and an orange, and I know during the planning and zoning meeting, it was brought up that that was like some kind of buffer. If, the blue is the actual 100-year floodplain, the orange that's shown on that map is what's considered to be the 500-year, which is like the .2% chance of flood. As far as like standards and stuff go, all of the city regulations dictate that we have to design it to the 100-year. So nobody, when you go and get flood rate insurance maps, or when you get insurance for flooding, it's typically based off of the 100-year, not the 500-year. But with our development, we plan on doing everything that the city has in place as far as the rules and regulations when it comes to detention and any kind of development. But here to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is open. Michael Fornino, you have four minutes. I mean, I apologize, you have three minutes. No, I got it. It's three minutes. I apologize, it's four minutes, Madam Secretary. Sir, you can start the clock, ma'am.
I personally don't really have any feeling on the applicant or his endeavors, one way or the other. But with regard to his application, it's a sad commentary. When in this town, whenever we're doing rezoning on anything, it always comes down to one of four things: vape shop, car wash, a chicken joint, or a gas station. My only point is this, that's the only four businesses that we seem to be able to grow in this town. We don't have any major companies, all this. I mean, if you vote for the guy, vote against him, I have no dog in the fight. But how many more gas stations do we need in the town? Perhaps if we had a major employer that employed several hundreds or even thousands of people, gentlemen like this could stand to actually benefit from an increased customer base that would be willing to spend more than just on a tank of gas and a cup of coffee. That's just a sad commentary. It's just, it's reflective, and again, I have, I have no opinion one way or the other on whether his application is approved or not. But once again, it's only four things that ever come up here for business: chicken joints, vape shops, car washes, and a gas station. I want you to think about that, because apparently you never do.
Mr. Brown, you got four minutes. Any residents signed up for PH-25-011 prior, please, if I don't call your name, please just go to City Secretary.
Just because issues and contracts started before your time doesn't mean that you are, it doesn't absolve you from having to handle the issues or maintain the requirements for the city. Can't keep your word for a month, no wonder why you can't keep it long-term. City code section 31-208, screening device requirements would mean that there would have to be an eight-foot solid masonry fence in between this and the properties immediately to the, I believe it was the north of it, according to the pictures, which is residential, because we're going to put a commercial property right next to a residential property. And that's what the new ordinance says that you passed. The residential stuff was put in there, I guarantee you. Drainage didn't account for an eight-foot wall being put in along the entire perimeter and length of the adjoining properties. That is going to affect how the water flows. And you can't go back and force homeowners to fix anything on their side of the fence. Is the city going to go back and fix everything on their side of the fence? No, because that would seem like an additional cost. Like to bring up the fact that in our comprehensive plan for the 2040 comp plan, it does state that we should maintain green space. Flood zones are typically what we maintain is our green space. Why would we want to put a gas station or any B3 right next to a flood zone where we're bringing many, many vehicles in that potentially leak fluids that's going to go down into the stream, into the water, that is immediately right there? Why would we want to add all that traffic right there? It's not like there are no convenience stores on Florence. Why do we need to take the flood zone space? Written requests or not, there were objections to this that were verbalized at the planning and zoning meeting. I think that should be part of the presentations. How many people came out and vocally spoke against it at the planning and zoning? Because that should have an impact on your decisions as well. There is a very good reason that this was recommended for disapproval, because it doesn't make sense for the city, not in the short term and not in the long term. Protect our city, protect our green space. If we protect our green space now, we don't need $29.5 million worth of CO bonds for Mr. Boyd's Parks, do we? Because I know he has something that he wants to respond to this. I've heard a lot of craziness come out of this council, but never so much as tonight, and I'm extremely disappointed in our mayor, our council members. You can't keep your word. What makes me believe, or anyone believe, that when it comes to engineering, word is going to be kept, that this will not affect drainage, that this will not affect the flood zone, that this will not affect the property owners? You can't give that guarantee.
Councilmember Board, oh, by the way, thank you. Councilmember Board? Oh, it's still open? Okay. The same for you, you wait till it closes, and you'll comment after the last, okay.
No, I want my comment to be made now.
Okay, please.
I just heard the constituents speak. And I'm sure in her, in her opinion, those are things that are important to her. But I cannot let this meeting go on. And you say that we're not sincere or just or honest? We work hard. I know I do, to make sure that everyone's being treated right and that things go right in District 3 or with this council. It burns me to no extreme. Today, I almost turned 60 years old, I don't want to tell my age, but today is my birthday. And I tell you what, it means a lot to me, Melissa. It means a lot when I come in those doors and I sit up here and I make decisions. Those decisions linger with me all day and all night. This staff, when they come, they work hard. By no way or means are we trying to disrupt anyone's life or be disrespectful to green space. I'm an agriculture girl. So I understand some of the things that you say at times, but you better believe that we would not, not be careless and take away from the livelihood of constituents or this city. I thank you for your comments, but I got to tell you, that's your opinion. And this one is mine. And I stand on them.
Now, one thing I agree, when we up here, council, you respect the person that's speaking. But when we're speaking, you got to respect us. You want it, but you got to give it. And council, I ask of you. People know what to say and how to say it. They've been in this game long enough to say stuff to trigger, and that's the response they want. They want to trigger you. Do not be triggered by foolishness. If you know you do your job and you know it do it well, leave it there. Let them say what they got to say, four minutes, take your seat, next person. We have a long agenda, and Councilwoman Cobb, you have the right to express your concern, but it's just triggers, that's it. I apologize, Mr. James Rogers. Sir, you have three minutes. Oh, Mr. Board said he wanted to wait till I close public hearing. Are you going to do it now?
I'll say it now, because I'll make the motion.
He said?
I'll say it. He's at the podium, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, sir, you have three minutes, I apologize for, four minutes. Yes, sir, sir, I apologize for that.
You're shortchanging me, mayor.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not. It's just, ah, so yeah, I apologize.
I am James Rogers, I'm at 104 Ambry Cove. I'm across the street from this development that is proposed, and I recommend disapproval. The primary reason is safety. Mrs. Segarra asked a question about was there a stream there? There are two streams there. The one that's visible above the ground, and there is an underground stream that goes right through Turtle Creek. So if we are going to take out arable land, put in concrete, there will not be absorption of runoff water, which is typical of that above-ground stream. And I only say this because the last time I was before this council, Quintero Engineering questioned my credentials. I'm a West Point graduate, an army officer, and I'm an engineer. I see this entire flat plain as a terrible danger in the future. And if we take out less soil and it equals less absorption, one day, there will be a terrible flood that will take out part of Turtle Creek neighborhood. I'm just trying to protect my neighborhood again. Quintero Engineering, the last time I was here, they had a project that right now purportedly is on the fluff. It was supposed to be R2, from R1 to R2, and now the owner has not gone to development at all. He's trying to sell the land, purportedly. So I doubt Quintero Engineering capability to do this correctly. The city staffs told you that part of this is on the floodplain. How can you think of even allowing this kind of project if it even touches the floodplain? She said kind of, on the floodplain, kind of not. Well, that's ridiculous. And the other reason, one of the other reasons is this is the map that we were given with nothing on it. This is what they had that they sent to the citizens, too. They gave us this letter. There was not a protest form in there. I corrected the city staff on this at the Planning and Zoning Commission. They had the audacity here today to say there were no protests. Well, if there's no letter in here with a protest capability, how are there going to be protests? So what is that? Is that incompetence? Or is it collusion? Or is it a lack of professional ethics? I'm not sure. But the point is, this proposal is wrong for the city. But the point is, this proposal is wrong for the city. It's wrong with the comprehensive plan. And I really don't expect the city staff here to agree with me on this because the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to one in a great majority to disapprove this. And your history has been otherwise, even with that kind of disapproval. And I would just like to talk to Councilman Cobb. This is in your district, District Three, the one that you talked about safety, the one you talked about helping the people. I'm concerned about your vote. I'm concerned about all of your votes. I recommend and strongly expect disapproval of this. Thank you.
Thank you, too, sir. Mr. Kager, I have a concern. The protest form. Yes, Mrs. Messer.
So when we send out notifications for zoning requests, there's a form that's included in the notification. This is a future land use map amendment request. We do not customarily provide a form in the future land use map amendment requests notifications because there is no requirement tied to state law associated with protests. Now, we always welcome and will accept a written response. We receive them all the time for both flume and zoning applications, just an email or a written response. But there is no form included in the notification because it's not a requirement of state law.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. But you know what my concern with that is? If we can stand up here and say in the presentation, it's not right or wrong, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just, as a citizen, if it was me and I didn't know the process, I'm going to go another way. I'm going to go another way with this. If they do not understand the process, how can they protest? So if we're going to mail out a letter, even though it's not state requirement, and I'm just a regular citizen and I'm not, I don't, I have a lot going on in my life and I just can't come here every, every Tuesday and just be so involved with family. If I'm going to send a letter, why we just can't put the, I mean, I'm not, is cost effective? I'm not trying to tell you, but would you consider that in the future? Or when you do send the letter, can we have like a little sentence saying if you would like to challenge this, you can send in a note or a letter? Just, that's all I'm asking.
Mayor, if I can add something?
Yes, please.
Just to tag along to what Ms. Messer is saying, it's not that the form isn't required by state law, it's that the protesting is under state law for zoning cases, not for flume cases. And so that's why there's a different process because state law allows an actual protest that has a legal consequence that requires certain voting, certain supermajority voting. But that is not the process under state law for the flume amendment, and that's why there's two different processes.
Yes, ma'am. And I understood that the first time, but if we're going to say there's no protest, then if people don't understand that you can protest, then why do we have to say there's no protest if we're not sending out a form or they don't know the process on how to protest?
We're sending notice, but not of notice of ability to protest because protest is a legal term of art and is only relevant with regard to zoning cases.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Zegar, since she's up here, thank you both for that, some clarity.
No, I was just going to say the same thing because on our presentation, it just says, staff notified 28 surrounding properties. And to date, staff hadn't received no responses regarding this request, so just kind of clarifying that.
Yeah, it can be misleading.
It can, you know.
Because they don't know they can protest.
Because we can look at it and say, well, nobody protested.
Protest, I guess it's okay.
It's okay, and I understand, but to say that, you know, we hadn't received, well, maybe, like I said, you know, they didn't know that they can come up here and do that. Does the letter say that?
The letter notifies them of the public hearing and the dates and times of the public hearing and gives them the opportunity to speak.
But it doesn't say they can protest it.
It doesn't, it doesn't because the zoning, the zoning notification, we include a form at the, at the end where there's lines where someone can write on and turn it, you know, mail it back. You've seen those a lot in your packets. We don't include those in future land use map notifications, but we certainly can if that's the council's direction.
Yeah, because that's what it says here. I'm reading, it says, to date, staff has received no written responses regarding this request. So I don't know if that's.
Which is, which is true. We didn't, we didn't provide the form on which to do it, but we have received written responses for future land use map amendments in the past without the notification.
Got it. Can I ask you again? Do I start before?
Oh, yes, so you have a minute and forty seconds.
Can I just get clarification on the, what, we're talking about the stream that's going through there? Because the person that spoke said that there was two, one underground and one is, can we clarify on that? Is, do we either have them or do we not have them?
Looking for Andrew, I'm not.
Mrs. Zager, you aren't in that position tonight.
This is, this was actually the first time I've heard about underground stream in that area. I mean, we've been focused solely on the surface streams, so knowing that, you know, I don't have any record, but knowing that there is something, that's something we'll have to look into.
Yeah, well, even the one that's above ground, if they happen to build and it cuts it off, I mean.
Well, they can't do that, so they still have to preserve and make sure that they're not going to impact, you know, the streams.
Just want to make sure we clarify all that. Because, you know, a lot of times, we hear things and you guys are the people, we pay the money, so we trust you versus the emotions that, you know, when people come here, it's an emotional response, I understand that. Nobody wants it in my backyard. And, you know, I don't mind siding with people, but they do have to come with something legit, not just an emotional thing, and for us to consider that, because that's what we trust you. We trust your expertise, your judgment, and that's what I'm going to go on, so thank you.
Yeah, so we'll look into it. We'll look into the FEMA maps and look into TCQ to see the stream maps that we know, to see if we can find anything pertaining to that.
Thank you. Public hearing closed. Councilmember Board.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just received another form for someone that would like to speak.
Okay, we got to do better than this. Because if we've been sending in the audience and, come on, that means we have to start back over. Mr. Seals, did you have one?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. Any who else have one over there?
Heather McNeely just turned in a form.
Okay. Public hearing open again. Mr. Seals, before you sit down, come on up, sir. You have four minutes. Will you pass me those forms, Madam Secretary, when you're finished? Well, I can give you mine. Did you give them to Mr. Kager? No, Mr. Kager.
So I just, I want to clear up some confusion of this flood map situation. So I did speak at the P&amp;Z regarding this item. I have no skin in the game. I really didn't know anything about it. But I will say that when the city presented this zoning, the map they were using at the time was not a FEMA flood map. It did not have all of the coverage area that was in this flood zone. So I just wanted to explain that real quick. So that's what kind of derived a lot of the conversation with the P&amp;Z because at the time, the blue shaded area kind of went right around the square box. And so when I looked at the FEMA flood map, the way it works is, and everything he says is correct, right? So the Zone AE, there is a, like a diagonal pink and gray area, and there's the blue shade, so the diagonal pink and gray is the most flooded portion of the flood zone. Then it gets down into the blue, which is still Zone AE, which would be within the 100-year and require flood insurance. But the orange is still a flood hazard zone, right? So the other two are special flood hazard areas. The orange is still a flood hazard area. And he's correct, it is a 0.2% chance it's Zone X, right? But the P&amp;Z had none of this information, and so I just felt like they should understand that before casting the vote. I didn't tell them to disapprove it. I had no skin in the game. I just simply explained to them that, hey, the map that you see in front of you is not correct, right? But I will say this on top of this, right? The flood map that's there, this orange area that's going into now that box where they're zoning, that's based on data from September 26 of 2008. So what we're all assuming is that that flood zone has not expanded at all, when historically, if you look everywhere else in this city, that is not a true statement. All of our flood areas have expanded, right? It's just the way it is. You get soil erosion and that area gets wider. So I think it's just prudent to make sure that people understand that when you talk about the flood maps, it's based off very old data. And two, it's, I would really suggest to the council or the staff to make sure they're using the FEMA flood maps, right? Don't use a GIS layer that goes on top of existing maps. Just go to FEMA and grab their map for presentation. As far as what y'all were just talking about, I agree. I think it's completely unfair that we send a notice and then the staff comes up here and says, well, nobody provided a response. Because then you have certain council members that will parrot that as affirmation that no one cares, right? Which is not true, right? People cared. People talked about it.
Bless you.
So it's really important, I would highly suggest, and we talked about this, digital engagement, right? Provide a means for citizens to provide feedback to the council, right? If it's an email, have a mechanism or read receipts or whatever, so somebody knows that somebody read it, right? But digital engagement has to be part of what you're doing moving forward because people need to know and have means to reach out to you to comment on these certain items when there's no form to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well said, well said. Mrs. Heather McNeely, welcome back, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Hello. I actually didn't intend on speaking on this matter, but it does pertain to flood zone maps dated in 2008. There should be no development until those flood zone maps are updated. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Zager has said, he didn't know there was an underwater stream in that area, just as when he came to my area, he said it was rough estimates. He didn't know that an underground spring was tapped off. These, this is information that the engineers need to be making and have readily available when they're planning our city. But instead, we're going off of assumptions and rough estimates and outdated maps, which then floods out the rest of the residents. I don't believe that anything should be approved that is adjacent or near any flood zone area, even if the property isn't in it, because of the adjacent properties to it. Now, let's talk about flume changes. Gilbert Estates has a little tiny yellow stain in it for a flume change because they only had to notify themselves to general residential from estate-style land. Once they did that, they were able to then put in a full plotting of a complete development because that tiny little spot in the flume change allowed them to do it, and not one resident was notified. It was a loophole, and this is another one. Flume changes, residents have a right to know about them. They should be notified about them, and they should also be able to contest them. There should not be a loophole for developers to create a general residential in an estate-style area to fit in 85 homes because they would have never been able to do that if it was done without being deceiving by state law. Just because state law says this is what you're required to do doesn't mean you can't do more, doesn't mean the city can't hold the developers accountable, can't say to the city staff, why aren't we notifying more residents of this? Why is it that I have to pay to get notifications, to buy the newspaper, come to City Hall? I'm not notified of any of these things until it's put on the agenda. Why isn't it posted on the website? Why isn't it posted on social media? Instead, I have to pay for a paper about finding a flume change because they don't have to notify anybody. I had no skin in the game on this one, but it does contain a flooded area, and the outdated flood zone maps should no longer be utilized, and no drainage plan should have ever been approved with, without updated flood zone maps. How do you do wastewater drainage with poor wastewater flood zone maps? Think about it. You're flooding out your residents and your cities in every time you approve something with outdated maps. 2008, what year are we? What is the population from 2008 to today? What is that increase? What is the increase in homes? But yet, we don't know about underground springs? We don't know about underground water lines? Well, I think maybe our experts should do a little more research before they come out to properties and make rough estimates or suggestions. Because your experts should be that, and they should be given the most updated information and tools. If it's $2 million.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. The council have to approve that.
May I have another minute, please?
When I ask the council, please, stand by. Counsel, no. Okay, let's start, let's just get, Councilmember Adams, yes or no? Councilmember Boyd?
No.
Councilmember Zegar?
No.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Solomon? Councilmember Cobb? Please, quickly.
I have one minute.
Madam Secretary.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
It's up to me to vote yes or no.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, please give her one minute.
I'm asking that the city invest in the FEMA flood zone maps before approving any developments. I'm hearing it's over $2 million. Put in a bond for it. You put in a bond for a golf course? $3 million and only 200 residents use that? How many residents are using the streets? How many residents are being flooded out? But $3 million bond for a golf course, but we cannot get a bond for a FEMA flood zone map that is dated from 2008? Think about that. You are making developments and plans on outdated maps that are flooding out your residents every single meeting. Every two weeks, you are saying yes to things on outdated maps. You are doing the city a disservice.
Thank you. Mr. Kager, are we making decisions out of outdated maps?
Wait, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
First one.
We don't have an updated map, that's obvious. No one has disputed that. Most cities don't have one that's current, and most of the developments you're up here approving, it has no impact. The landing question that we're talking about with 100-year flood in 1600 would have flooded. And just because someone moves there, time doesn't start at that point. If it's a floodway, it's a floodway, and when we get a lot of rain, when we get 100-year rain, lots of places flood.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kager. Now, back to you, Councilmember Boyd. It's, oh, God, yes. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Go back to the fundamentals here because it gets a little, it's a little wearisome listening to all the phantom concerns. It don't exist on the ground as we speak. We've got a professional engineer back there who's highly qualified, and we're just supposed to toss his recommendations out. Yeah, I'm in for all that. So I asked a question earlier, if it's in the flood zone, answer was no. So just going to make a motion, make a motion to approve PH-25-011.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Can I get a second to PH-25-011? Can I get a second to PH-25-011? Councilmember Segar?
I second it.
All in favor, yes. Motion failed. Board to two. Madam Secretary, once you finish, we can move forward. PH-25-01, counsel, it requires a three-fourth majority vote to pass this item.
Madam Mayor, I'm ready. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For your patience.
Yes, ma'am.
Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Republic Engineering and Development Services on behalf of 5011 Cunningham Road, Colleen, Texas, excuse me, Colleen LLC, case number Z2504, to rezone approximately 22.91 acres out of the T Cunningham survey, abstract number 199, being lots 71 through 74, out of Llewellyn Estates, number three, unrecorded subdivision, from A agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district to planned unit development, PUD, with SF2 single-family residential district and RT1 residential townhouse, single-family district uses. The subject property is locally addressed as 5011 Cunningham Road, Colleen, Texas, requires a three-fourth majority vote. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 22.91 acres out of the R Cunningham survey, abstract number 199, being lots 71 through 74, out of Llewellyn Estates, number three, unrecorded subdivision, from A agricultural district and R1 single-family residential district to planned unit development, PUD, with SF2 single-family residential district and RT1 residential townhouse, single-family district, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counselor's staff went through the slides. Would you like Ms. Messer to go back through them? All right. The applicant, Mr. Seals sent me... Is applicant here? Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Good evening, sir. Mr. Seal has sent me an email and said you may not be able to make it, so good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Terrio. I'm with Republic Engineering and Development Services. There's a lot tonight, a lot of information about drainage and utilities and things like that. I want to start out by saying that this project here has no intention at all to make anything worse in the area. When it comes to drainage, we are held to a pretty high standard by your city code to ensure that we have no adverse impact downstream of our development. I came to this area right out of college and have been doing engineering in Colleen for over 15 years now, and have several drainage projects that I've been a part of. And through that whole process, I guarantee you, staff has made sure we follow every single rule when it comes to drainage. And we intend to do the same thing here. As far as utilities, it was mentioned earlier, as development comes into new areas, so does infrastructure. And this project does need some off-site sewer improvements in order to make sure it sewers properly. Those are all things that come with the next step of development. You know, zoning is our first chance to get an idea if we can move forward with this idea, and then the developer can put more time and effort into those drainage, water, sewer, you know, public infrastructure improvements and designs. All of that being said, I want to step back and look at our concept plan again. Our concept plan, we spent a lot of time on it, had a lot of conversations with staff back and forth. And what we were going for was to take a property, open it up for the residents. You know, we're not trying to do an apartment complex that has a small park in the corner. We're not trying to do straight roads with, that all you see are the front 15 feet in a front yard. And this concept shows rear-loaded, single-family housing as well as townhomes that face open green area. What we're proposing is a small yard for each resident, for each house. And then past that will be open areas with planted trees that are outlined in the PD, specific numbers of how many need to go in there, sidewalks that move through the whole development. Those sidewalks would hopefully facilitate neighbors spending time together outside, and kids being able to walk to Cunningham where they could, you know, get on a bus for school or towards the amenities center that we're planning towards the front of the project, without being on a street or adjacent to a street. All streets will not have sidewalks adjacent to them. All internal pedestrian traffic will stay away from them. Yes, there will be some crossings, you know, to get through in a couple areas, but we try to limit those as much as possible. We've also provided a buffer around this to at least help with some of the concerns of the residents. You know, a lot of what I've heard from the residents, both at the P&amp;Z meeting and tonight, I think a lot of those things would be a little different if they get a chance to see this concept plan. The concept plan was not shown at Planning and Zoning. Tonight was the first time it was shown on the screen. Being able to see the amount of open space that's provided in there, yes, we are asking for some townhomes within there, but we've also made the overall project less dense with the amount of single-family and the separation between them. When it comes to Love Spur, from my understanding, we have not gone out and surveyed that yet. That will come. And yes, if any additional right-of-way is required, we will work with the neighbors there. And honestly, after this is all done and we move past this agenda item, I'm willing to speak with anybody outside that may want to, we may want to talk about that. But from what we can tell, there's enough right-of-way there to widen this to get adequate emergency access, and we plan to improve that road so that it meets the standards of the fire department. On top of that, our detention ponds, like was mentioned by staff earlier, they did a very good job presenting this, and I think that the way we have it laid out now should facilitate equal or better drainage conditions in that area. And that's what's required by the city code. Traffic, traffic is traffic. You know, what you said earlier, I agree with. No matter what you do as city, the traffic's going to get worse. The good thing is Cunningham is a pretty wide road. There are some intersections around it that may at some point need some improvements, but...
So, thank you. Your four minutes are... Thank you. We will now open up public air. Okay, Mr. Stefan Patterson? Okay, that person's not here. Richard Davis? Richard Davis? Is that the person you told me you were going to speak for?
Well, I asked if I can just read his statement. If not, then this gentleman will read it on behalf...
No, you, I mean, you got to sign up to read.
He did. That's, this is Richard Davis.
You Richard Davis?
Tonight.
No, he's not. No, he can't be him tonight. No, sir. That's not the way it works.
That is a 73-year-old service of civil government.
Mr. Seals, first of all, that's your first one. I want you to listen to me what I'm trying to say. You can read it because you signed up. If he wants to read it, he has to sign up in his own name. That's all I'm saying. So, sir, if you want to read it, sign up in your own name, and you can read it for Now, do you understand what I was trying to say, Mr. Seals? I'm not denying it, but you have to follow protocol. You're a stickler for that, so we're going to start, keep doing it. And, sir, since you're signing up, please come up, and I don't have your name. State your name for the record so we can get moving.
My name is Anthony Kendrick. I'm going to be reading this on behalf of Richard Davis. Friend Seals asked me to read it because he has something to read also. Mayor and council members, my name is Richard Davis, and I reside at 5301 Cunningham Road in Colleen, Texas. I am willing, I am writing to formally request that you do not approve the proposed rezoning in my surrounding area. I strongly believe that allowing the change would pose serious risks to the residents living here. One of my primary concerns is flooding and erosion. When heavy rains occur, a significant amount of water flows down the hill to the property next to mine. If multifamily buildings are constructed, the removal of topsoil will worsen runoff conditions, leading to increased flooding on the streets and the surrounding neighborhood. I have personally witnessed how rainwater already erodes my yard and flows over the roads, creating hazardous conditioning for the resident. Additionally, I am concerned about the long-term impact of the development on the community based on past experiences living near similar developments. I feel that these units will eventually become low-income housing, especially if the initial developer sells the property within a couple of years. This could lead to deterioration of the area and decline in property value. The area is currently zoned for single-family drilling and agricultural land, a designation that aligns with the existing characters of the community. There is no compelling reason to change this to a multifamily zoning, especially when the single-family homes would be better and more suitable in the neighborhood. I urge you to reject this rezoning request and instead encourage development that aligns with the current zoning. Thank you for your time and consideration. I apologize for not being able to attend in person, thus due to health concerns, but I appreciate you, your attention to this important matter. I see, I still got a little time. I decided to read it because I'm a veteran, so I decided to read this, and he told me the guy was a veteran, and I think his voice should be heard whether or not he's here or not, so I decided to read that for him.
Thank you so much, sir, for reading for him. Michael Fernino, you have four minutes.
Just to the generalities of this issue, the people have already spoken on this, as has the Planning and Zoning, which took recommendations from the people who were there. Unanimous vote. And now it would take a three-quarter majority vote to override what the citizens and what the Planning and Zoning Committee, which is recommending on their behalf and their own internal discussions, saying, okay, no, we don't want this. So my concern, my worry, is that if you override what the citizens and what the Planning and Zoning Committee, which is appointed to deliberate such things on very specific items, in the past, this has occurred where there's been a mismatch between Planning and Zoning and members of staff. Doesn't matter. The Planning and Zoning Committee and the citizens who bother to attend and are directly affected by this, they voiced their concerns. It doesn't matter what the staff wants. The people don't want it. The people are going to pay the price either real or perceived, or, you know, there's going to come at some cost to them in their estimation. So I would encourage you to just go along with what the people want, whom you represent. It doesn't matter what the staff wants. It doesn't matter what you personally want. You are here to represent the will of the people. All I ask is to discharge your duties in that and go along with what the citizens and what the Planning and Zoning Committee has come up with. And of course, that elicits a very quizzical look on the city manager's face, because why would we ever listen to what the people want? In general, this demonstrates a constant frustration between the citizens, the committees, the staff. In the end, it's us, the people. I don't live near Cunningham Road, but this, in principle, I defend what we've arrived at so far. It would take a majority of you to pretty much say, it doesn't matter what the people say. I've seen this in this chamber before, where a previous speaker produced a petition, hundreds of people affected, on the Featherline Road to compare and contrast this issue. And despite a petition of several hundred people, you voted against the people. So I'm just saying, in the spirit of all this, as to where we're at in the state of affairs, don't vote against the people. Don't vote against the P&amp;Z, which you folks appointed to the P&amp;Z, entrusting them with using their best judgment and their own research and their specific expertise on such issues. It doesn't matter what the staff wants. Nine times out of 10, in many cases, well, maybe not nine times, many times, I'll be fair, many times, the staff that want it don't even live in the city. So trust the people that you appointed. Trust the people that you're supposed to represent. Go with the will of the people. There's, there should be no argument about this. I realize that a vote like this is a formality, but again, the people have inasmuch spoken as has the committee that you all appointed and approved. Follow the will of the people.
James Rogers? James Rogers? Heather McNegley? You have four minutes.
Once again, I put this sweatshirt on. The last time I put it on was the last time I fought 511 Cunningham, because it's the donut hole that's being filled. Let me get started. I strongly oppose this rezoning as it not only greatly will impact my property and put my livestock at risk, but really, I'm disappointed again by the lack of responses by some of you sitting on this council. I would like to point out that just because this is in District 3, doesn't make it an only District 3 issue. Every one of you vote on all matters, so I say this to the at-large members, District 1, District 2, and 4, remember that when a citizen contacts you, your next time, don't ignore them and say it's not my district. I requested on February 26th of 2025 via email to every single one of you, including city staff, that I would like the video added of the flooding to the agenda packet. It is not in this packet, and no one replied to my request about it being added. Why was it not added? P&amp;Z allowed it to be shown. Yet, we have been referred to as the Mob Law of Seven. There are seven seats up there, so how are we the Mob Law? The city staff is not supplying proper documentation to you. Why is the south side of this property showing the corner of Love and Love Spur? That's not the property lines. If they would have shown you proper image, it would have shown the property lines of the west, and you would see mine and Ms. Hallmark's properties instead of the corner of Love and Love Spur. That's nowhere near this property. Hundred-year floodplain. If you look at a hundred-year floodplain, that's supposed to be once every hundred years. Why am I having more than a hundred-year floodplain every year? You have all seen the videos, or at least I hope you opened them, because I didn't get responses from most of you, but those videos would show that it's past the outdated 2008 floodzone maps. The flooding that I have sent videos to every single one of you dating back to 2019, when Gilbert Estates was put in and I asked for help then, you have all seen it. I'm sorry if I'm boarding some of you up there. Last meeting, Mr. Kegel stated the reasons the city staff approved the Turkey Trot, or disapproved, excuse me, that one of the Turkey Trot housing, was because it didn't go with the surrounding rural area... the surrounding rural area. But now, this is more rural than the Turkey Trot area, but yet the city staff approves this one, but disapproved the other one? Which is it? Are we rural, or is Turkey Trot rural? Because I think we're more rural than they are. Love Spur is being listed as a thorough street on this map, and now they're going to put a gated lock on it. No analysts, no traffic analyzation needs to be used because it's gonna be blocked off? Is that gonna be on the city maps that it's blocked off? Or how many streets are gonna drive through Love Spur thinking it connects through this new rental property? This developer has not reached out to any of the property owners and now says he wants to work with us. Why has, why is he waiting till today? A 20-foot brick wall around the entire property with a holding tank that will flood into my property. I grant no easement and I will not grant any easement for any holding tank to drain into my property. So, a developer that wants to work with me probably should've come to me ahead of time since I am affected by this the most, and so is Ms. Hallmark. He has not come to either of us, and many of you didn't even give Ms. Hallmark, nor I, the time of day to speak to us. This is extremely disappointing that we have to constantly come back on the same item. May I have one more item, minute, please?
Go through each council. Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Segala. Councilmember, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Cobb. And what's the, what's the, is there a tie again or not? I, I lost count. Okay, Ms. Magnili, your time is up. Moving to the next person. Uh, Ms., uh, I wanna make a correction. On the video, I did speak to Ms. Magnili on the phone, and the reason that video was not added, because the agenda had already been posted.
I asked February 26th.
That's your first warning. And it was already posted. With that being said, is there a Beth Wilson? Beth Wilson? You have four minutes. I gotta go to the restroom.
And again, good evening to you. I just wanna address a few more things that kinda I said earlier, but it's a little bit different. The first thing I wanna say at P and Z last week, very first thing out of their mouth is, they aren't gonna do any traffic analysis? Seriously? Again, we're on rural roads and there's not much infrastructure changes going on. As I've, I have walked and talked my neighborhood in the last couple of weeks and listened to many issues, it is concerning that the P and Z approved multiple developments to go ahead to build with complete disregards to citizens concerned. Now, I do have to give credit where credit is due. A couple of the commissioners did, opposed. That doesn't keep it from coming to you because the majority rules. They, I appreciated their current concerns and, and speaking to us after the meeting. You are preparing to approve bonds for streets, for the, for new roads, but nothing where density is being forced on us. Example of that is with the properties being developed in the donut hole on what used to be Judge Cook's property. Mr. Perser was here last city council meeting. He's got approval to do 22 homes.
Let's stick to the public hearing, okay, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
On subject, please.
Okay. My apologies. When it comes to traffic, one, one concern is that, let's, let's, let's go back a few weeks. We had a horrific incident in Colleen, Texas. And they sent them, they sent the children by bus and the parents down to Manah Church. It disrupted the neighborhood that I live in, it disrupted a business or two that I'm aware of. We were not prepared for that accident and how to take care of it. You can't tell me there's not other places they could've gone where they had two-lane highways or a five-lane. You were representatives that sat in front of us, didn't have to endure that, that, that going on in your neighborhood. Your life went on. Yeah, you had heartfelt feelings about it, but you didn't have to deal with the traffic and the police and, and the congestion of the day. I've spent, like I said, time out walking my community, and one concern with one neighbor is back off of Chaparral where the two new schools are at. It dead ends at the end of the school. But she goes, takes her kids from my area to Chaparral to school and comes home totally agitated every day. It's called anxiety. Then she's gotta go pick them up and come home and have anxiety. This is not a fun way of life. Then, all the area south of-
Ms. Wilson, we appreciate your time is up.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna call up Ms. Melissa Brown, please.
Ms. Cobb, I appreciate your feedback and I hope we can talk after the meeting, but I never intended to blame you for anything, and how could I when our mayor is rushing everything through this meeting? You're hearing everything for the first time and expected to make decisions like that that you may not even fully understand what the motion was. In fact, it was so rushed that there was no resolution to the prior matter on PH 25-011 when the motion to approve failed, and then there was no motion to disapprove made, so it's just kinda hanging in the atmosphere. Anyway, let's talk about promises that can't be kept as far as the drainage. I wanna speak to a very specific situation in District Three that, that I can point to, where you can't tell me that it's going to be taken care of during engineering, because the Potter House Church on West Tremere is flooding out their neighbors. It is flooding out their driveways because they have gravel driveways. There was some, you know, different math used in the equations for that, that wasn't caught. Actually, I can tell you this for facts, because it did go to court, and one of the property owners in an adjacent property did win a lawsuit because they are flooding out their property. There can be all of the best intentions, and I don't believe that any developer, much less this one, has intentions of harming their neighbors, but intended or not, harm can still happen. This is in a controlled growth zone. Controlled growth means that, you're right, it doesn't mean no growth, but what it means is if we don't have the existing infrastructure in place, we should not be moving forward with development right there according to our 2040 comprehensive plan. There is no infrastructure going, there's no sewer line going here, it would have to be added. Whether it's impact fees, whether the developer puts it, whatever, we still have to maintain it as citizens. It's not there, it's not existing, this is not part of the comprehensive plan. Let's talk about safety and, and walking and sidewalks, because subdivision requirements say that sidewalks do have to be put along the roadway, but they just came up and said we're gonna have no sidewalks along the roadway. Now, they also don't intend on putting any parks in this, this little development according to what they told P and Z, but they said kids can walk down 2000 Oaks and go to the park there. So, let's have them walk down a road that is two lanes, no curbs, no gutters, in that area. We'll have them walk down there until they can catch a sidewalk and then cross Stagecoach to go into another housing subdivision to be able to play on a park. How is that safe? How does that make sense? It doesn't. To say that you have to go along with staff, Mr. Boyd, I'm sorry, but two weeks ago, you went against the staff recommendation and you proudly made the recommend, the motion yourself. So, to say you have to listen-
Stick to the agenda.
I am on the agenda. Please pause my time.
No, keep, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
Can you please pause my time?
I'm going to ask that we quit dragging a councilmember's name into-
Madam Secretary.
Sure. We're, we're just-
Let's hold Councilmember Boyd. Let's hold. Let's go ahead and resume our time.
I'm gonna request the extra 10 seconds back at the end.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, so, this council voted against staff recommendations two weeks ago. So, you can't say you have to go along with them because they are the experts. Experts make mistakes, too. Experts come up here and, and they give the best presentation that they can, but they don't know all the details all the time. I was just looking at a topographic map of that area, and actually, that happens to sit at a little peak, a little high point. All that water is gonna drain out, not just into Love and Hope, it's gonna go across the street, it's gonna flood out that whole area without the drainage being exactly perfect, and you cannot guarantee that. As far as hundred-year floodplains and, and water already being there and natural drainage, my hometown, we saw two 500-year floods come in back-to-back, one year after the next, and it devastated it. Just because that's what it is labeled as doesn't mean that nature follows our plans, doesn't mean it follows what FEMA says as far as what those planes are. Traffic is, is going to be an issue, it's already an issue in that area.
Ms. Brown, thank you.
Can I have my 10 seconds back, please?
She did apply that, ma'am.
Okay, may I please get just one more moment?
I have to inquire with the council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams. Boyd.
No.
Segala.
No.
Solomon.
Cobb.
Three to two.
Three to two.
That's three to two, and so, no, ma'am, thank you for your time. We're gonna call up Mr. James Seals, please.
Mr. Seals, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Boyd as you're making your way to the podium. Go ahead, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Listen, we've got to learn how to speak to an issue and not to personal things. We are adults here, supposed to be adults. I know we're capable of doing this. I know this is an attention-seeking opportunity, but let's just stick to the issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Mr. Seals.
So, you know, this area, we talked about a lot, I, I mean, there's not too much more to say, but I'm gonna say it. But basically, you know, the city continues to try to build urban developments on rural infrastructure without improving it, right? Featherline, great job, right? You improved that area, you put everything in place to support it. This, this is not that. There's no infrastructure in that area that supports this, and, and you can't continue to go down this path. Another problem that I always see here is we focus in on just that single property that we're talking about and we don't zoom out, right? You gotta look holistically at everything around it, and I'm, I'm gonna get to that on the flooding. First and foremost, 50%, and I'll say it again, 50% of adjoining land ownership within the 200-foot boundary oppose this. 50%. We should be able to just stop right now, but, but I learned that doesn't always, it isn't always the case. Draining and flooding. Christian House of Prayer, Sacred Elementary and the surrounding neighborhood, and Gilbert Estates all contribute to the flooding and drainage in this area. I know it's hard to think that, but Christian House of Prayer is elevated, they have a drainage ditch that floods straight down south. Gilbert Estates, right, you guys said you, we're not gonna do anything that makes it worse. Gilbert Estates literally moves thousands of gallons of water over the street and kicks it right back out to the drainage, to Ms. Magnili, the Price, the Hallmark's properties. It's not, that makes it worse. You're taking something that was going over sheet flow over hundreds of acres and you concentrated on concrete and just shoot it out into people's backyards. That makes it worse. I'm sorry, I'm disagreeing with the staff. Retention ponds, look at Yow Ranch. Last year, you had people kayaking down the neighborhood because the retention pond didn't hold. They, they're not meant to, to do that, and either way, that retention pond is still draining into somebody's backyard and house. Like, I don't understand what we're even talking about. What should happen is you do less density, you do drainage correctly and move it to Cunningham. Take that whole left side of this property out, change the elevation and move the water back to the street. That's what should happen. You don't shoot it down people's yards. Just 'cause it's a flood zone doesn't mean the city gets to flood it. That's not your right. You have street drainage available on Cunningham, move it there. Not consistent with neighboring land. You know, three sides of this is either rural lots or single-family homes. This is not consistent at all, right? We talked about duplexes and Featherline, Turkey Trot, and all these places. You have, Perser's duplexes are not consistent, but Mr. Welch's is. Featherline is not consistent, but somehow this is. How is that possible? And there is no need for middle housing. I brought up middle housing during Featherline. Mr. Revell stated, cities are considered to have a missing middle housing problem when middle housing represents less than 10% of the total housing available. He stated in that same email that Colleen has a 19% middle housing density.
Mr. Seals, thank you, your time is up.
May I have one more minute, please?
Let me take that to the council, please. Councilman Adams.
Yeah.
Boyd. Councilmember Boyd, for one additional minute.
No.
Thank you. Segala.
Yeah, I'm good.
Councilmember Solomon. Okay, go ahead, sir, you've got an additional minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm back.
Thank you.
Um, look, I, I get it, right? I know we need to grow, and I actually like this project, I said that at the P and Z, but it's the wrong place. It really is. When we talk about traffic, it's not about, like, just extra cars. This is a safety issue. You have two ingress egress points on Cunningham directly across from another ingress egress point. Like, you're going to have accidents, we're creating problems that don't need to be there. This project should be single-family homes, less dense, route the drainage the correct, the correct way, and that's really where this project should be. This project is great in other areas of the city that already have higher density or infrastructure to support it. This area doesn't. I, I ask you, please, please, 50% of within the 200-foot boundary, 50% disapprove this. I ask that you disapprove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roxanne Hallmark Byrne.
She, she's, she's having-
Ms. Sue Hallmark.
Yes, it's you, ma'am. Oh, you're good. Well, we're, uh, oh. No, she didn't leave, she's not gonna leave you, but I'd bring you home anyways.
I'll never leave you, mama. Never.
Thank you again for having me speak. I'm also concerned about the water runoff. When it rains, when it rains a lot, it floods our land and it stays there until it evaporates, soaks in, or goes into a natural preserve. The floodplain needs to be updated. I'm also more concerned about the potable water. Nobody mentions that. In my 92 years here in Colleen- In my 92 years here in Colleen, we have had numerous droughts and water shortages. Last year alone, we were in dire straits, our lakes were down really low and I'm worried about where are all these people going to get their water? Humans do not make water. And I mean, that's just all I have to say about it and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. It was been brought to my attention when I was out that it was a discussion in reference to me pushing agenda items and I want to be clear, Councilwoman Cobb was off the agenda. Councilmember Boyd made the motion for RAS-25-042 and Mayor Protem seconded that motion. The question that was asked by Councilwoman Cobb about his personal life and my statement was, I don't get in people's personal life. So I can't rush anything through when you can't talk about it. And the item prior to their RAS-25-041, Councilmember Boyd made the motion, Segarra seconded and I didn't say a word. So I want to get that clear. I don't rush my council members, but I hold my council members accountable to the Open Meeting Act as well as the residents. You stay on agenda. So I just want to get that clear for the record because I was not in here when that statement was made. Any other comments? All right, can I get a motion? Taken under consideration, council, three-fourth majority vote for PH-25-01, Councilwoman Cobb.
Madam Mayor.
A motion before we can have a discussion.
I move to table PH-25-012.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cobb, the District III rep, to table PH-25-012. Councilmember Boyd.
I second with a question.
Councilmember Boyd seconded the motion. Councilman Solomon, do you have any comments? If not, we can move forward. All right, all in favor are tabling.
Sorry, I had a question, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay, discussion of Councilwoman, hold on, Councilmember Boyd. Councilwoman Cobb, did you want to say something for it? We can move forward.
I do. I feel as if there is some missing part. I tabled so that we could go back and we can look over it. Do I trust our staff? Yes. Do I trust some of the things that were said tonight? I do, but in order to understand and make a clear decision, then I have to table.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I determined a second just because after listening and hearing Ms. Hallmark speak.
Yes, sir.
I've heard a lot of fluff around it, but when she spoke, it's a little different. I want to ask, Councilmember Cobb, did you have a particular date that you wanted to postpone this to? Considering the developer and what they've got to do.
I have to fly in too. I would like to have this reconvene, this issue, in the month of June, end of June.
Do you have a date?
Let's go. What's our next count? What's our council meeting?
Council, Mr. Cagle, you can help her out.
First meeting in June is June 3 and the second meeting is June 17.
Let's go for June 17.
I think we have some count.
All right, we have council. There's a motion on the floor now and Councilmember Boyd has the floor. We're going to respect him. Councilmember Boyd.
I was going to ask if that creates an issue for the applicant, potentially? That's another part we do have to take into consideration.
Do you want the applicant to come to the podium, sir?
I'm just.
Because he's right there on the second one.
If you would, I'd like to know.
Yes, I mean, every day that this project sits in limbo does affect the project overall. So we would request, if it is to be tabled, to be tabled to a closer date to today than June.
Thank you. And that's just the business side of it.
I really believe.
Councilwoman Cobb, Councilmember Boyd has the floor. Please, council, y'all have to follow protocol now. Councilmember Boyd.
I was looking at the larger picture.
Yes, sir.
I asked the council to consider that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And if that's the case, Councilmember Boyd, if you want it sooner, Councilwoman Cobb, it could be moved to May the 20th.
I was thinking more June 3.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. I understand.
That's not close.
What the applicant just said, I don't know if you heard him, he said, if we, it's your decision because it's your motion to table and if you consider that, you can move it to May 20th. But if that's the third, that's what we moving forward with.
Let me look at May 20th, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, I do accept that date of May 20, 2025, would we table that meeting?
City Attorney, do she have to amend her motion to table since she got a second from Councilmember Boyd?
That's probably technically the correct way, yes, but if you're restating your motion and clarifying your motion to table until May 20 and the person who seconded it doesn't agree with, agrees with that and doesn't rescind their motion, I mean, in their second? Or we can do a motion to.
We can do it. We can, we can have Councilmember Boyd to rescind his and then Councilwoman Cobb can rescind hers and she can make a new one. I think that's the correct way. Would you rescind the first, second?
Sure, I rescind my second.
Councilwoman Cobb, will you please rescind your first motion?
Yes, ma'am, sure. Madam Mayor.
You have to rescind it first.
I rescind my first motion and the second motion will be, I move that on May 20, 2025, that we table our PH-25-012.
And Councilmember Boyd?
I second that.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had instances like this, like this, where it seems like a lot of times, things are not communicated. You know, here we got citizens, somebody that's been there a long time and then we got the developer and I think that there's a void there. And so I would like to see, you know, if they're, before they comes back, that you guys get together and you try to convince them as to why this is a good project and all that because.
Thank you.
In a respectful way, you see, I would recommend he speak to Mrs. Hallmark there, very nice lady. She's been there a long time, been here for 92 years and try to see if you can have her understand this and when you come back. I don't know what the outcome is, but you know, I think they deserve a little bit of respect and saying, you know what, this is what's going on, we're not going to flood you out or whatever it is, but I would like to see that, so thank you.
Thank you for that and sir, thank you for coming out and participating tonight, but my only concern is this. Growth is going to happen in our community, but how we do it and how we work with the residents and staff is going to be the key of the success of any development. And it was a lot of residents that came out and spoke, even though everything staff said was correct, it is in the comprehensive plan, but however, there are some concerns that council have and even Councilmember Segarra said it best, he was concerned when he went out to the young lady home and she walked him around and it was like the flooding area. There's no guarantee. We can only go by what staff says, that you cannot make it worse and that's all. So you need the community to buy in on this project, I honestly believe, before it can move forward. With that being said, Madam Secretary.
Madam Mayor, a vote needs to be taken.
We didn't vote, all in favor say yes, all opposed, thank you, Mr. Cagle, you caught that and somebody else said something. Oh, thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
She stayed on top of me. Yes, ma'am. So Councilmember Adams voted against it and all the other councilmembers, five to one voted to table it until May. And Madam Secretary, whenever you ready.
PH-25-013, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mickey Sally, case number Z2505, to rezone approximately .063 acres being part of Lot 12, Block 10, out of the clean original addition from B5 Business District with HOD Historic Overlay District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol Sales District with HOD Historic Overlay District. The subject property is locally addressed as 321 North Gray Street, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately .063 acres being part of Lot 12, Block 10, Colleen, original from B5 Business District with HOD Historic Overlay District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol Sales District with HOD Historic Overlay District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. With that being said, is the applicant here? Okay, good evening, sir. You have, yes, sir. Good. Yes, sir, your name?
Mickey Sally.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You have four minutes.
Well, basically, we're trying to rezone this project. It's going to be a bar with food. We're going to serve lunch and dinner from Tuesday through Sunday, but primarily on Thursday, Friday and Saturdays, we're going to shut down the full-service menu and mainly serve alcohol with a little bit of limited food from 9:00 PM until 2:00 AM. So I'm just trying to be a small part of revitalization and hopefully provide it a safe and fun environment as a destination for citizens of killing.
Yes, sir, you just want to be a small business owner and they are the cornerstone of our downtown area. Yes, sir, and I salute you for that because it takes a lot to put your own money and your own resources and time into a business because a lot of people, they will not do that. It's easy to criticize someone trying to have their own instead of getting out there and doing it. So I honor that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
With that being said, Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor, and I was just going to echo the same thing, you know, appreciate you doing a business in downtown. I mean, we've gone through a lot tonight and at the end, you know, made you wait so long, but I think it's for the good thing, you know, you bring some good. And I was just going to ask, you know, what is it that you're going to do on the weekend?
It's going to be a, we're going to have a DJ. It's going to turn into a small dance and, you know, just a fun place to, for people to go and enjoy some music and enjoy their time.
Yeah, and you've spoken with our downtown person down there, I'm sure?
Yes.
Over there, she's all the way in the back there.
Right. Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
So, good luck and thank you again.
Thank you. I'm very excited and we'll provide a good, good place for everybody.
Mayor Protem.
Again, I'll just echo what Councilmember Segarra said regarding the improvements to the downtown area and bringing something a little different. And then the Sunday option, that's been something that I've heard the constituents asking for. There are a few places to eat that are open, but they're asking for a little bit more so that I'm excited to hear that Sunday might be an option, even if it is a limited menu. Thank you.
I mean, Sunday, actually, we'll have full menu, Thursday, Friday and Saturday evenings from 9 to 2:00 AM. It's going to be limited, but the rest of the week we'll have a full, full-service restaurant.
Thank you.
Well, sir, I am known as Debbie Downtown. I mean, come on now, and I love that name and people think it offends me, but I tell everybody, when, in five, 10 years from now, boom, Debbie Downtown, I'm on the sign. But you know, I'm seriously, success. I wish you that. I mean, businesses from the corporate America all the way down to moms and pops, they close, but people never talk about the ones that succeed. So we want you to be one of the success stories in our downtown area because you invested in yourself when nobody else would. So I'm really excited for you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you. With that being said, we're going to open, oh, yes, sir, I'm done. With that being said, we're going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing open. Michael Fanino, Michael Fanino, Michael Fanino. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? And we are talking about PH-25-013 and he finally became number one. Councilmember Segarra, oh, oh, Adams, oh, because they, Board is always Board or Adams, Adams is Board.
I'll take the number two spot.
Councilmember Segarra has been hitting all night, but you just got to go for it. Councilman Segarra, thank you, Councilmember.
I move to approve item, what is it? There you go.
And I second, Madam Mayor.
We have a motion by Councilmember Adams, a second, I mean, a motion by Councilmember Segarra and a second by Councilmember Adams to approve PH-25-013. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Unless Madam Secretary want to break, council, we pushing through. Public hearing is closed. Did we close public, we didn't have, did I close public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so discussion item, we got a lot more to go. Discussion items. Let me make sure he can get me. Discussion items. DSO, Madam Secretary, discussion items, council, you have three minutes to speak, three times each.
DS-25-008, ARPA funding update for projects in downtown.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Ms. Kate Kizito. I'm getting there, I'm getting there. One day, somehow, in the near future, I'll get that name. It's always an honor and a pleasure to see you. You do amazing, great work from the time that you started to where we are now with the city of Colleen. It is truly amazing. I go to different events through central Texas, especially with other mayors and other leaders, community leaders, and they talk about how we have turned down, turned around the downtown area and making it so inviting for others to attend. So I want to tell you, regardless of the critics, the criticism and Facebook is fake news, you know that, Facebook is fake news, you have done an exceptional job. And don't let what the naysayers say decrease your value because you have brought this city from a mighty long way, from where we were downtown to where we are today. With that, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Segarra want to say something too. Councilmember Segarra?
No.
Well, get your click off. Okay, anyone else? All right, floor is yours.
So tonight, I'm here presenting an update on the status of our ARPA grants for downtown. July 12, 2022, city council authorized a negotiation of seven contracts in downtown Colleen as a startup grant program. The businesses here are listed with, that were approved at that time and they have values that were approved at that time of the award amount. And the first one we'll go over is Braids &amp; Browse by Chris. Her contract was signed August 29, 2022 for $19,781. A change order was issued for $617.81 and her private investment match was $4,900. Braids &amp; Browse by Chris hosted its grand opening in October of 2022. They then rebranded in 2023 as Headquarters Upscale Barber and Beauty. The terms of their contract did end on December 31, 2024 and all contractual obligations between the city of Colleen and Braids &amp; Browse by Chris have been fulfilled. Next up, RingCon de Panama, their contract was signed in July 27, 2023 for $87,500. A change order was issued for $13,500. Ms. Beano's closed on the purchase of her property in February of 2023 with the help of that grant and held her grand opening on December 7, 2024. Let's Eat Texas, a contract was signed with them for September 9, 2022 for $89,000. Her matching private investment was $325,000. They held their grand reopening in December of 2022. Oops, sorry. Kinetic Images, their contract was signed December 5, 2022 for $95,000. Her matching. Her matching private investment was two hundred and ten thousand dollars. They held their grand opening June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Space Create, a contract was signed August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Her matching private investment was four hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. They held their grand opening in November of twenty-twenty-two. Aroma Cigar Lounge signed their contract in November ninth of twenty-twenty-two for two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. The renovations were completed at the end of December in twenty-twenty-four. They held their soft opening, or officially soft opened earlier this month and held their ribbon cutting yesterday, actually. And then last but not least, Twice as Funny Comedy Lounge, a contract was signed on August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two for three hundred and six thousand dollars. Their matching private investment was one point four million dollars. They held their grand opening May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. In February of twenty-twenty-four, the Clean Fire Marshal's Office did find that there was a kitchen in operation without proper fire suppression systems. The property was instructed to stop all cooking activity at that time. In October of twenty-twenty-four, the Clean Fire Marshal inspected and found that the kitchen activity had resumed and once again had the equipment removed from the property. In February of this year, the Clean Fire Marshal again inspected and found that the kitchen activity had resumed and a cease and desist was issued for the building. On March fifth, twenty-twenty-five, the city of Colleen did issue a demand for recoupment of the ARPA grant awarded to Twice as Funny in the amount of three hundred and six thousand dollars. I do have Chief Kavinsky here with me tonight if you have any questions about that timeline. There are also five open code enforcement cases for the property, working without a building permit, occupying the building without a certificate of occupancy for some accessory uses, and two international property maintenance code violations, and one sign violation. And with that, I will take any questions y'all have.
Yes, ma'am, I just have a quick question. I don't see council at all clicked in, but they'll come sooner or later. My question to you, with the money that we're trying to recoup, how have we started that process to get them off of funding back from Twice as Funny?
We have issued the recoupment letter and there's a, I'm usually work here period that they have to respond to it, and we're still within that.
Well, could you explain to us, that's too general for me, what's going on? What's the process? Somebody please. And if that's not the time or place, let me know. And if you cannot answer, because it's a legal matter, just say you can't answer.
I think right now we're in, within the recoupment period. They have a period of time to cure after we send them that notice. And then at that point, there's different options we could take for, to enforce that contract. And so if we do get, it's the question, if we get, when we get the money back, what will be, is, the question is just where, where are we?
Right. My question is, first of all, who gets the building? Second of all, when we get out, how do we get the money back? And do they have a timeline within the contract that if this happened and the business, you go out of business, business closed, you have 10 days to give us, recoup our money back, 30 days? I mean, like the details of it. And I guess you don't have that information. So you say you got, you moving forward with getting our funding back, ARPA funding, but the more details I want, you probably don't have that. I just don't want to, I talked to an assistant city manager about this. I'm big on controlling the narrative and how our city look. I'm big on downtown Colleen. Everybody from here, probably all the way to New York, know how I feel about downtown Colleen. And I understand that businesses do go out. I do understand businesses, that's just life, just corporate America all the way down to our level. But it takes away from all the successful businesses. So it only take one business that people can harp on and just try to tear down all the small business owners in our downtown Colleen that have invested. If you, if people take the time and really look at those slides, compare it to what we have given to them and compare it to what they invested of their own money, there is no comparison. So I don't want one business, whatever reason they went out of business, to have an effect on the success of our downtown Colleen. And, and we as a city, as a staff and a council, it goes both ways because I'm not pointing the finger. We have to get in front of these narratives. Because what I heard from you and also from you, city attorney, is not what people are reading on social media outlets. And we know they fake news. We all know that. We know the truth. So why should other small business owners suffer downtown? Because we, we got to get out in front of it and really tell the story. This is what happened. And I received from the media questions and things of that nature. And then we say, once we have the meeting, we'll address it. Well, we on, we on video and people are at home listening and we, we still haven't got clarity on anything. And I'm hearing counsel whispering saying, yeah, right, we got to, yeah, I'm listening to them right beside me. That's my concern. I don't appreciate other people telling our stories and we have the information. That's the bottom line. I can't make it no clearer.
I was able to pull up the contract and just to confirm, because I didn't want to get bad information, but the, the period for them to respond and provide the money is 30 days within receiving the notice that was sent out on March fifth. And when we do recuperate them, when we do get the money back, we can reallocate that money. There are, there's, our provisions where we can reallocate that money.
Right. Because we, the city, invested in a business, which we should, this council, but I do want the money back to give another small business owner opportunity to open it up. And I want us to stay on top of that. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time, both of you, City Manager Wilson and Attorney Clemens, to look that up. Thank you both. Anything else, counsel? Okay, councilmember, oh, wow. I see all y'all want to say something. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. You, I know you have a mechanism, so we don't, we have anybody else that's in danger? Or let me ask that, because I don't want to, you're monitoring all of our grantees to make sure we don't have this issue going forward, correct?
Yes, sir, we are in contact with all of the grantees.
Okay. In a recent conference I attended, in the committee, our vice chair was brought to our attention that if items were not under contract, the money is being snatched. And my fear, Ms. Kegel, also is that we make sure that since, that this money does stay in the city, because what is, what has happened to other cities, that they only obligated money and not just, what we did was great, we contracted. And my fear when it's no longer under contract, and that's, I'm afraid talking about it now because of that, I want to make sure that we can, we've met all requirements to keep it local. Because folks who had money obligated had it snatched back by the federal government.
Well, remember, the, the money was spent for the designated purpose. That building was improved.
Right.
So, so that obligation, that obligation is over. And I think that's the thing to keep in mind. Yes, we're going to take care of all the legal obligations, do everything we can to get the money back. But the money was already spent as designated and that building is now more valuable. And you saw, all of the other ones, the grantees have completed, completed their period. And if you'll remember, when this started, people wanted just a simple form to sign it for the money, and we were like, no, there has to be contract. Remember the rough patch we went through? This is why, because in, in any small grant program, it's not going to be a hundred percent success.
Yeah, I, I'm a, what we did to do this was great.
Yes, sir.
And we had no anticipation of the other possibility happening. I just want to make sure that we're covered. And of course, we're not going to figure that out right now. But, and just going forward, and then there were other businesses on the list that we didn't approve. Are we going to re, go back to that list as we consider how to reallocate?
I'm understanding the money is already spent on the building. Is that what you say?
It is, but we have the ability to recoup it. I'm just saying for the ARPA purposes.
That's what I mean.
This money was spent for the designated purpose.
So we designated, so is there, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is part of this, are we going to keep the three oh-six within the ARPA grant or are you going to come back to? Okay. Got it. Thanks.
The city attorney's looking different, but.
I believe it has to be reallocated for the same purposes.
That's what I thought. That's what I was asking.
It doesn't just go back to the general fund.
And so that goes back to, didn't we have, there were other businesses on that list that we're going to have to go back and look at as a possibility? Or will we open up the process again?
I, I think at the appropriate time, we'll, we'll bring that back to you.
Thank you.
So, so Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
So Attorney Clemens, so we gave them money, ARPA funding, they invested in the building, correct? They put money into the building. So is not the building coming back to us if they spent all the money on it? Or who keeps the building? Or that we just want the cash back? That's the part I'm trying to.
Right, we're calling back the money, callback provisions to get the money.
And the building goes to them?
We don't have any, it's still their building.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, ma'am. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Mayor Proton?
Thank you. And so that did kind of cover some of my question. And it would be just my hope, I'm just addressing to the council, that we would maybe reopen that and give businesses, our local businesses, a new opportunity once we're able to recoup those funds. Thank you.
I guess I asked the right question because we got one person left. Councilmember Segala, sir.
Yeah, no, I think you guys are talking about it. What I was going to kind of ask, because the building is the collateral and it has a lien, and the lien of the city is three hundred and six thousand dollars. But it said private investment was one point four million dollars. Was all that financed? And I don't know if you can say that, but is all that financed or is that, is there more equity in the building in there?
That, that was the financed amount and we paid the, our grant was towards her down payment on that financed amount.
So, so if we had to call that and, you know, assuming they can't pay it, and let's just say the bank forecloses, they get first lien, right? They have to get their money. And then whatever that building sells, right now it would have to sell for like one point seven million in order for us to recoup our money back. Is that how I'm reading this?
Yes, sir, the city's in second position to the bank.
Second position.
That's why, that's why I brought up the building. That's why I was going there, but I didn't want to say lien, but.
No, it's a lien, it's a lien. And the city puts liens on a lot of properties. We do closings and if they end, cut the grass, they don't think they're going to pay it. But whenever that building transfers, guess what? They can't transfer that building with liens. And so that's the same thing here, you know, if it, whatever happens, you know, we're going to collect our lien, providing, and that's the key, that it has enough equity that we can make. Because I think the bank is going to want their money first, so. Thank you.
So that was why I brought up the question, how do we recoup our money? And you, yeah, it's clear now. Well, and like I stated earlier, I got to think positive. We have some successful businesses downtown Colleen. And I would hope that we continue to push Debbie Downtown, my name, and to, and make sure they're successful. We just got to keep an eye on them and make sure they're successful and try to get all resources that's free and available that can help them. All right then. With that being said, any more questions? All right. Madam Secretary, D S dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-nine.
D S twenty-five zero-zero-nine, discuss revenue bonds.
Welcome back, Mrs. Tanglin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. This item is to discuss issue water and sewer improvement revenue bonds. Some background, in twenty-twenty, was the last time we issued water and sewer improvement revenue bonds and for specific projects. Then COVID, COVID struck and construction prices skyrocketed. Several priority projects exceeded budget, causing shortage of funding for other projects originally identified. In fiscal year twenty-five, budget CIP process, the remaining projects were identified. The revenue bond issue is a twenty-seven million bond issue for water and sewer infrastructure. This is partial estimated debt payment included already in the current water and sewer rate structure, and it will be included in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget as it was included also in the forecast. And there also is a three point five million bond issue for J R K office building that is a tax supported with revenue placed. This item is still pending some discussions, so we will remove it if that doesn't go through. This is the priority project list. This is the projects for water. And that totals twenty-seven point five million. And there's two projects for sewer, the total nine point five, with a total of twenty-seven point one water and sewer bond. We also had the J R K office building for three point five, and the total revenue bond will be forty-one point one. For the J R K office building, we will need to know before May twelfth if it's approved because we will need to take it out of the bond if, before the conference call with the rating agency. And in June nine, we will have the notice of sale and official statement and distributed to the potential bidders. In June seventeen, the bid will be received in the water and sewer improvement revenue bonds. And the city council is whenever they will consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the water and sewer improvement revenue bonds. And July ten is the estimated time of closing the funds delivered. I have Bart and Dan still here. You guys have any questions and they can assist me with those answers.
Ma'am, no, ma'am. I thought I heard, I did hear his voice and I'm assuming he was like, I want to talk. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. And sir, thank you so much for staying around to be here to support us. Thank you. Next time we will learn lesson from, I learned a lesson to move you up close. I was wondering why you still there, I looked at the agenda. I apologize for that, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, with that being said, oh, we almost there. Councilmember requests for future agenda items. Councilmember Boar has three items. Madam Secretary, if you don't mind, could you read them all at one time? And when he get ready to transition to the next one, I will, you can read it so we all know where we at. You can do them at one time, whichever way you want to do it.
Councilmember Boar, do you have a preference on this?
How I.
Doesn't matter to me. I was just that little statement, I was going to make a motion.
Okay, I'll just read them one at a time, if that works for you. Okay? R Q twenty-five zero-zero-two, future parks funding.
Councilmember Boar?
Thank you. And I've got three items because I'm not a quitter, even though I'm on my way out, still getting the job done. That's what I do. All right. First of all, thank you to the council for your consideration on this. This item is proposed to engage a discussion on the reallocation of funds dedicated to West Side Regional Park towards more viable park projects in District Four, Downtown, and District Two. With that said, I make a motion to place an item discussion regarding future park funding on the April fifteenth meeting agenda.
Can I make a second to that? And I have a statement.
So the, what we doing is just a request to put it on the agenda. It's not a conversation.
Right. Well, I agree with this. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. So all in favor to put R Q dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-two on the agenda, future parks funding with Councilmember Proton? When it get on the agenda, she will be first to speak. Now, so approve it just for future agenda item, and that's R Q dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-two. Okay, motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary?
R Q twenty-five zero-zero-three, code enforcement methodologies.
Councilmember Boar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you again for your consideration, counsel. This item is proposed to engage a discussion on code enforcement, code enforcement methodologies in response to concerns expressed by citizens and local businesses regarding the city's response to code enforcement violations. The intent is not to villainize our staff or attempt to resolve any specific complaints, but to responsibly hear from our citizenry and evaluate the city's approach to violations. With that said, I make a motion to place an item discussing code enforcement methodologies on the April fifteenth meeting agenda.
Councilmember Proton?
Second.
A motion to, for future agenda items, R Q dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-three, by Councilmember Boar, second by Mayor Proton. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
R Q twenty-five zero-zero-four, renaming of Bunny Trail.
Councilmember Boar? Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you to the council for consideration the last time. This item is proposed to engage a discussion on the renaming of Bunny Trail. I'm going to read the statement that I sent to the newspaper, which says, "A former resident of District Four residing just off of Bunny Trail, retired Command Sergeant Major Alfonso L. Davis was a well-renowned individual known for his welcoming presence in the community. Specifically, Mr. Davis is best known for running along State Highway one ninety-five, offering a friendly wave to every traveler that passed by on the roadway. He did this for several decades in all types of weather. Additionally, Command Sergeant Major retired. Davis served thirty years in the U.S. Army, having served four tours to Vietnam. Mr. Davis may just be the most well-known and respected person in Colleen's history. Furthermore, Bunny Trail possesses a generic name presently, and is currently being reconstructed. I find the timing to introduce this initiative to be the most appropriate. I believe it's important to maintain the trail designation, as it is what citizens are used to, and it's synonymous with the running that Mr. Davis had done for the many years. The proposal is to rename Bunny Trail to A.L. Davis Trail." I did want to show this highlight that we have of who Mr., turning around, Mr. Davis is. So The Herald did a, an article back in two thousand, I want to say, two thousand one, two thousand eleven on Mr. Davis, so they're very familiar with who he is and what he's done, and so that's the discussion I like to have with the council, so I'm going to go ahead and just make a motion to place an item on the agenda for April fifteenth to rename Bunny Trail. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Boyd made a motion, RQ dash twenty-five dash zero zero four for future agenda item, Mayor Protem?
I second that.
Seconded by Mayor Protem, all in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries six to zero. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, Meetings Law, Governor Code five-five-one-point-zero-zero-one, the mayor now call a closed meeting of the city council on the first day of April twenty twenty-five at seven fifty-two P.M. Under the following authority, and we're doing items, I only see, we have two on here, we have to go behind closed doors, but it's not on here. Oh, yes, it is. No, it's not. RS dash twenty-five dash zero four seven, and DS dash twenty-five dash zero one zero. The five-five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one is consultation with the attorney. The city council will consult with legal counseling regarding pending litigations, and I want to make sure I say that again, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney. The city council will consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigations, agenda item RS dash twenty-five dash zero four seven, section five-five-one-point-oh-zero-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. The city council will discuss possible economic development incentive related to an aviation business project, agenda item DS two-five dash zero one zero. We are now going into closed session. I would like to call our meeting back to order at eight twenty-five. Can I get a motion to approve RS dash twenty-five dash zero four seven? Councilmember Sagara?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Adams?
I second.
All in favor, yes? All opposed, no?
Aye.
Sound like an old man.
Hmm, did everybody vote?
Yes, ma'am, it's unanimous.
All in favor, six to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. A second.
So we had a motion by Councilmember Adams, and a second one by Councilmember Solomon. All in favor, or board? Was it board? Councilmember Boyd?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.